Good morning, welcome to special meeting of the city council for May 19th, 2021. We're still under some of the emergency directives. In-person attendance is limited for this meeting. Public comment may have been submitted via email or voicemail prior to the meeting. We will also provide call-in periods during the appropriate public comment times. With that, I will call the meeting to order. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items may be for consideration may be combined and any item on the agenda may be removed or related discussion may be delayed at any time. And we will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with our first public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment for this meeting on items listed on the agenda? The phone number to call is 702-589-9629. Again, this is our initial public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak on items on the agenda? Number is 702-589-9629. Speakers will have up to five minutes to speak. Mr. Mays, do we know if there were any emails or voicemails?
Mayor, no public comments were received.
Thank you. And this is our initial public comment period. The phone number is 702-589-9629. Hearing no one for public comment, we will close the public comment period. Move to our first agenda item, matters pertaining to the city clerk position.
Morning, Mayor and Council, I'm Bryce Bullock, Administrative Services Director. And I have for you today for possible action, matters pertaining to the city clerk position. And item A would be interviewing four of the candidates. And then it would be we're seeking direction on the next steps in this process. And we have a candidate ready to, ready to join us unless you have any questions prior to that.
Any questions? All right, I think we're ready to proceed then. Very good. Hello, good morning. Can you hear me, Ms. Aguirre? Ms. Aguirre, can you hear me? Ms. Aguirre, can you hear me?
Good morning.
Good morning. I am, we've got to get our volume here a little bit. We're echoing a bit, but bear with us. We'll be there soon and then I can start asking the interview questions, okay?
Great, I gladly will. Thank you.
Very good. Are we good to go? Okay. All right, young lady, we're ready to start. The city clerk is responsible for facilitating the work of the city council and all committees and commissions by ensuring the preparation of agendas, minutes, maintaining records of meetings, informing residents of all city council committee commission actions and supervising city elections. The questions today will in large part measure your experience relative to those responsibilities. Now, if you want me to reread a question, please just ask. We'll start with question number one. How do you build effective working relationships with elected officials?
Through communication, I believe that's key. My intent in the first 90 days would to be to get to know each of the council members and gain an understanding of what they hope to achieve. Also with staff, communication, getting to know them and regularly communicating. So having regularly scheduled one-on-ones with staff and regular briefings with council. I imagine bi-monthly meetings with council and in addition to reporting. So I would plan to offer monthly, quarterly and annual reports.
Very good, thank you.
Excuse me, I cannot hear her answers. There's feedback or echo.
All right, let's take a moment. You can read the volumes on all of those devices down. So let's take a moment, Ben, and make sure we have our volume down on all the devices. Can you go around and make sure, Ben? Ben, can you make sure they're all down? Thanks.
Mr. Bull, is my volume an issue? Do I need to turn mine down as well?
No, I think you're fine. I think our devices just need their volumes down and then hopefully we can get rid of the little echo we have here.
Thank you. I was concerned about feedback and initially I had mine turned down too low.
I think you're good.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we've got it. Very good. So we'll try question number two. Are you ready?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'm sorry, hold on, let's just hold on one more moment, please. Good, I think we've defeated the feedback. So thank you. Thanks for your patience on that. Question number two. Tell us about your expectations of a typical workday as city clerk.
My expectation would that it would likely be filled with creating and developing agendas, not only for mayor and council, but also the boards and commissions. During election season, it would be working closely with Joe Gloria, the registrar of voters in confirming election sites and creating ballot committees. Also being in contact with the finance structure in regards to records and the records committee. Additionally, building a rapport and being open with the public so that we can really create a feel of trust and transparency. I also think that the day is just going to be long and full. And I understand you guys have four tens. So I understand that it'll likely, you know, be very full 10 hours and likely some hours over the weekend.
All right, question number three. What work experience do you have preparing, reviewing and editing city council and other public meeting agendas, minutes, transcripts and legal notices?
So the list was council meeting agendas or meeting agendas?
I'm sorry. I can reread the question. What work experience do you have preparing, reviewing and editing city council and other public meeting agendas, minutes, transcripts and legal notices?
I worked in a large city clerk's office. And so my primary responsibilities were elections and passports, customer service, admin staff, budgeting, things of that nature. And so with this question in particular, I want to reassure you guys that I have had experience with these things. So in the management group, I regularly participated in conversations about open meeting law. And I regularly helped proof or review agendas or in was involved in large conversations in regards to agendas, particularly to council meetings. I was and have been a member of professional organizations. And for a long time, I served Nevada State Municipal Clerks Group as the clerk treasurer. And so for quite a few years, I created their agendas and minutes and published and posted them all in accordance with state law. In addition to that, our office created many, many transcripts for the police department. And I reg-, not regularly, that might be a much of an adjective. But often I did assist and proofread some of their transcripts or help them with red lines. And in addition to that, public notices, I created public notices for all of the elections. And as you guys know, that those have to be published in three languages. So currently that's English, Spanish and Tagalog. And so I created three sets of public notice for every required public notice. And there are a minimum of four for each election. So I regularly were producing public notices.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question number four. Public meeting facilitation and support includes knowledge of Robert's Rules, parliamentary procedures and Nevada Open Meeting Law. What work experience do you have with these various elements of public meeting facilitation and support?
Again, I used those regularly as I supported the Nevada Municipal Clerks Association and in dialogue with my coworkers in the management team and the Henderson City Clerk's Office. And over the past few weeks, since I've accepted your invitation to interview, I have been studying the Open Meeting Law Charter and NRS. Also purchased the Robert's Rules and I've been refreshing on that as well. And in addition to that, I have just been watching all of your guys' council meetings, all of your previous council meetings and becoming familiar with the way you guys prefer your processes and your meetings held and handled.
Thank you. Question number five. Records management is an essential requirement of the city clerk. What work experience do you have with records lifecycle management?
I began in the clerk's office as a records professional. I was working in the building department. And so I regularly handled all types of building records. I did that for two years, particularly with the life cycle. My experience really began with retention schedules and election documents. When I began with the city of Henderson, they had never destroyed any election materials. So there were probably over 40 to 50 years worth of materials. And so I went through all of those boxes and it took quite a few years. But I went through and followed the proper record procedures for reviewing them, itemizing them, identifying what was on the retention schedule that's established by the state and then moved through the entire process to have what was not required to keep for permanent retention and had it destroyed properly.
Very good. Question number six. Related to the management of the office itself, please tell us your work experience developing a budget, hiring, training, managing employees to include holding employees accountable.
Could you read the question one more time so I can catch all three parts?
Absolutely. Related to the management of the office itself, please tell us your work experience developing a budget, hiring, training, managing employees to include holding employees accountable.
So one of my primary responsibilities at the city of Henderson is to manage the budget. And I administered roughly a $2 million budget for the office for the last 10 plus years. I oversaw all of the strategic planning and the goals that are associated with that. I forecasted possible, any possible five-year needs and was in close relation with the budget as I requested. And at times even gave back some money so that we would be able to, you know, maintain a positive relationship with budget and continue to work through any type of needs. In addition to that, I also oversaw all of the working components of a budget. So accounts payable, accounts receivable, the payroll. I approved and managed, again, I approved and managed that for the entire department. Hiring, I also was responsible for hiring of my own division, which occurred once or twice a year for full-time positions, but was on a regular rotation for part-time employees. And so I would work closely with our HR business partner to just ensure that everything was handled properly and develop the proper questions to ensure that we were getting the right staff to not only meet the office's needs, but also to ensure stellar customer service for our public. And that's training. And for management, again, I typically supervised up to 10 employees at any given time. It was a various range. So anything from part-time staff to entry-level admin staff to passport and election employees. So my style had to be very adaptive for each group. Part-time is, you know, typically just getting to know them and coaching and counseling them. Same thing with the entry-level staff. I had several entry-level employees. And so I recognized early on that those are the employees that you're typically going to only have for a year. And then they're going to try and promote and kind of create a better situation, you know, earn more income for their family. And so, and those situations as well, I focus on coaching because I want to develop them to be the very best employee that they can be so that they really are a great asset to the city. And lastly, with the other staff, with the election and passport staff, that was more of an opportunity to get feedback. They really were running the day-to-day operations, particularly in passports. So in most aspects, that was more of a partnership that would allow me to get their feedback or really go to bat for them if they needed any type of procedure or policy changes. And overall for accountability, it's mostly being present. I've learned you need to be present to know if they are accountable or not. And if they're not, it would be working with it, again, with human resources and the business partner to really establish a coaching plan or a progress plan that would allow you to document, preferably document any progress that the employees make. But also if not, then you have proper record of if you need to move forward with any kind of disciplinary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Boulder City is close to a large metropolitan area and there are a variety of other governments and regional boards in the area. Tell us about your work experience developing and maintaining intergovernmental relationships.
Building relationships was one of my key components of my duties when I worked for the city. I did hear that you were specific to other boards and commissions, but I really want to open that up because I also use that to build really a lot of rapport with other city clerks because it's important that you have a great relationship with them if you need to call and bounce a question off of them. I also maintained a great relationship with the registrar of voters, Joe Gloria. That really was a benefit to the city and it allowed us to really work within a moment and kind of be very flexible in how things were able to just develop within an election cycle. Additionally, I served the city of Henderson legislative team for seven legislative sessions. And relationships are so key in that as well because you will need them to really, you know, the legislative session moves so quickly that you don't have the ability to communicate with someone in a traditional professional manner. You have to be able to make phone calls on the fly and text messages to anyone within your profession or within political arena. And so then I oversaw all of those types of responsibilities within city clerk's office and maintained all of those relationships. And again, I know that I mentioned that I served the Nevada Municipal Clerks Association, but I also served the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. I served on a board, two boards actually. We hosted a large international conference in 2010 and I created many relationships and offering and participating in that. And I also served the International Municipal Clerks on the Public Relations and Marketing Board for a few years. And so I also have those international municipal clerk relationships that allow me to seek information, feedback and support for the city of Boulder City if given the opportunity.
Tell us about a time when you solved one problem but created others.
You know, I think that overall, a great example of that would be with passports. I believe that Boulder City also experienced a huge influx in passports around 2016. And so I'm extremely driven by customer service. And so when most of the municipalities or other post office locations really wanted to pull out of passports and close their doors, I recognized that there was a genuine need for our residents. And so as a public servant, I didn't want to put them out. I mean, at that time, we had three, four-hour waits. And so we were continuously improving the process or the program through feedback. We'd huddle together with staff and, you know, the assistant city clerk almost daily for some period of time. And we'd say, what can we do better today? And so although we were serving our residents better and our program was growing stronger with each day. And by the way, at some point gained some, it became known as one of the best programs and was often referred to as such. But with that being said, it's one of those strengths and weaknesses scenarios because we're doing so well for the residents. We're also, we created kind of a nuisance for city hall. They were overwhelmed, you know, our lobby was full, our lobby was hot. And like I said, it was, it was somewhat of an inconvenience for all of the city hall employees and staff. Parking was terrible. 7-Eleven was overwhelmed. Our custodial services were overwhelmed because now our lobby was full of drinks and whatnot. So we tried to do our best for the, for the residents, but I could see where we fell short for communicating and preparing, you know, city hall for that overwhelming amount of visitors.
Tell us about a time when you made a suggestion that was implemented in this field.
In the city clerk field or specific to that example in the passport field?
I don't have that level of specificity, but my guess would be in the city clerk field.
Okay, I'm going to go with customer service. I believe that the two, the city clerk and customer service are closely related because the city clerk is the direct link between mayor and council and its residents and citizens. And so customer service is integral to create that level of trust and transparency. And through doing so, I managed staff through customer comment feedback. And in doing so, we regularly got perfect ratings on our customer comment cards. And from there, I just continued to manage staff based on the feedback we were getting from residents and staff as well and those high-rating, high-marking scores. In due time, the city manager's office recognized that our customer service level skills were really, really high. And so they started seeking feedback from me. And some of those things were to expand the customer comment cards, to also include telephone interviews at the end of each call and also initiate feedback from emails because telephone call, or I'm sorry, in-person interactions, particularly now because of COVID, were quite significantly less than our touch points with citizens through telephone calls and emails. So just again, we expanded the program so that it included email and telephone. And we continue to just manage through feedback. We also, they, and through that partnership and speaking with the city manager, they asked that I would take on it as an entire citywide initiative. And in doing so, I researched customer service nationwide, developed some standards and implemented them. I created some measurements and goals that allowed us to really track the progress of the program. And in doing so, we won the 2020 Program of Excellence Award from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks.
Tell us the steps you take to monitor the quality of your work in your current job.
Through, primarily through measurement. So I work closely with the department's strategic plan. And in doing so, we have various levels of goals and all of them are tied to measurements. And so primarily you use those measurements and those reporting tools to share with your, you know, boss at the time with the city clerk. And also those reports would be passed on to mayor and council. And from there, it's, you make adjustments and considerations based on feedback that you're receiving from mayor and council. In addition, that's very mathematical and analytical and that's a basis of my background. But typically, I think a great other measurement tool would just be based on relationships. You could tell if they're strained, you can tell if they're positive and they're moving forward. So I think it's another great opportunity to check in with people just based on rapport and situationally, just reading body language, nonverbal cues.
How would you define multitasking?
Multitasking is being requested to do multiple things with multiple deadlines on multiple days or almost daily. And so I think that's the life of a city clerk. I believe that's almost the profession in itself because you don't have a finite description of responsibility. You're not responsible for safety, you're not responsible for health. You're responsible for administration typically, which is a catch-all term for everything. Can you repeat the question? Can you repeat the question?
How would you define multitasking?
Yes, so I was headed there, but multitasking is, is, is everything. And and I think the follow-up question for myself would be then how do you, how do you manage all of those demands? They're coming at you daily and that's through organization. That's through proper management of your calendar and running multiple to-do lists. Personally, I have a daily to-do list. I also run a long-term to-do list and I calendar everything, including reminders. Um, and I also, it really is effective to multitask for me. When I keep a very tidy, neat, orderly desk where everything has a designated place.
Tell us about a time you anticipated potential problems and developed preventive measures.
I wanted to answer this generally. I know you're asking for a specific question. Um, and hopefully one will come to mind while I describe to you kind of how I operate. I am very good at anticipating needs and future concerns that are coming on the horizon. And usually I face those head-on by researching them in great depth prior to that even happening. And so with that research, I like to print out hard copies and organize them in binders. They're always, um, include lots of notes and tabs. And that's because I believe that the old-fashioned method works best. You never know when you're gonna run into low connectivity or wireless issues. Or, um, also I feel like keeping a binder is really useful when you. A similar or same question arises many, many years later, right? Because you can see, no exaggeration, you can see your logo, I've created a binder, tabs, notes. If for some reason someone asks me about something about Boulder City, I have your charter in here and your ordinances. I know exactly where this is at in my office. I don't have to do the research again. It's very time effective. I grab the binder and then we revisit it. Once I see my handwritten notes, everything refreshes for me. And so in a specific example, I can tell you this greatly works. It's most effective for me during legislative sessions. Again, I mentioned I've been involved in seven sessions. And you guys will likely know, combined elections revisited the legislative session a good five, six times. Before it ever was passed. So instead of reinventing the will every single session. I would just go back and get my existing notes and then we would start over with the new assembly, congress. And then work through, you know, work through the combined election bill. Revisit the language and see how they've now maybe altered it just a tiny bit. But a bulk of the bill is still existent and then you're already familiar with, you know, eighty percent of the bill. And now you're only focused on the new language.
What are your short-term and long-term career goals?
My short-term goal with the Boulder, City of Boulder City is to really get to know you all. And to support you, um, benefit you the best in which you need at this time. Of what appears to be like an uncomfortable moment of change. And I'd really like to support you all and not professionally. Um, I'm a huge proponent of Boulder City. I was born and raised in Henderson, but when I was born and raised, the population was only thirty thousand. And so that was a small town and I'm really passionate about small towns. Um, personally, I think a long-term goal would be to live in a, in a very small town back to professionally. I just admire so much that Boulder City has maintained its values for over sixty years since incorporation. I find that so impressive and particularly refreshing in Clark County when the push is to be bigger and better. And so again, short-term, I really want to support you guys in your goal to maintain. It's family-friendly environment with controlled growth and just a huge. And a huge supporter of Boulder City and everything you guys are doing. Uh, long-term, once I get in and I feel comfortable with the relationship that I've established with you. And then I know that your feedback is positive and that we're moving forward in a, in a, in a really great manner. I would like to go back. I have this minimal amount of classes to earn my master municipal clerk. Um, I do have my CMC designation, but I'm extremely close to earning my MMC designation. But from there, I'd like to move forward and start focusing on records. And request with your guys' permission to join ARMA, which is a records management association that's international or national. And really hone in on some of those skills for you guys. And 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 maybe, you know, evaluate your guys' records program and see if I can assist to, to grow that. Or strengthen it in any way.
Yes, is the word citizens like to hear. However, if you had to say no, how would you do it?
Is politely a good enough answer? Um, really, I think that. Through customer service training and a passion for customer service, you develop a lot of skill sets on how to say no. Instead of saying no, say, hey, let's look at this. Help me understand what your need is. And then let me present to you what I can do for you. And then if I still can't give you what you need, which is highly unlikely, I'm gonna ensure you that I'm gonna use the relationships. That I foster to reach out and see what else we can do. I'm gonna see if I can say yes or to what level I can say yes. It's never a hard no. There's probably some intricacies that are involved that are really holding me back, but we can work through those together.
That's the end of the formatted questions and I'll turn it over to the mayor and council in case they have a follow-up questions. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Bolt. Any questions in addition to those that have been asked? Um, I have one question for you and that is. Uh, since you have worked for a larger city and Boulder City is a smaller city. How would you, uh, use the resources that we have here that are fairly limited? And in, uh, comparison to what you had there in Henderson, uh, to accomplish your job?
First, I want to say good morning, Mayor McManus. Thank you so much for this opportunity to you and the entire city council. To answer your question specifically, I think one of my management hang-ups is it was really hard for me to transfer. From an analyst to supervisor and into a management role because I really like tangible work. I feel like creating agendas and minutes and, and reports and building presentations. Those are all very fulfilling. And so every once in a while I would get caught up in not really, you know, spending. An exuberant amount of time on my relationships with some folks. So to answer your question, I understand that with less resources, there's gonna be more work. But I really enjoy work and I enjoy hard work. And so I'm looking forward to having a smaller staff. Um, in a smaller space or area to prevent any kind of. In the city of Henderson, staff is spread out into three or four different locations at times. And so I think that's problematic for team building. So that's why I want to emphasize, I'm really looking forward to sharing one space. Um, with fewer people and just focusing on good, solid, hard work for you guys.
All right, thank you. Um, do you have any questions or comments that you would like to make?
Um, yeah, so in preparing for this, I really studied the city charter. And particularly the ordinances because the charter led me to the ordinances to review the city clerk's responsibilities. And so it's clear that there are elections, there are records. Um, is there anything else not designated that. You're, you know, that you guys have established? Um, that way, you know, and then my follow-up question would be is if there are some that we haven't already discussed. I would like the opportunity to share with you if I have experience in those areas.
Anyone wishing to respond? Um, I, I would say one thing that you probably do not find in the charter. Uh, with regard to the city clerk's office is the support for, uh, council members. Uh, you know, we do not have staff that is assigned to city council. So we rely on the office of the city clerk to, you know, take care of some of the routine things that we need to do. Uh, and I, again, I don't believe that's necessarily specified, but, uh, that's the arrangement we have here in Boulder City.
And I'd like to respond with that by letting you guys know that I have a lot of respect for the position, the office itself. And for each of you. And so through my career, I've always made myself available to the mayor and to the city council. And in doing so, again, those relationships exist between staff or council themselves. And so I'm always free to take those phone calls. And in the past, it's typically to help residents work through an issue or a concern. Possibly understand the process for initiative or reprimandums if they want to work through, um. Concern that they have or they want to change the law. And additionally, I, as you know, I was not the city clerk. And so I didn't regularly attend briefings, but I did attend briefings and regularly interact with council during, uh, elections. And again, we discussed that I created the budget and managed the strategic plan and the customer service program. And through those things, I also created lots of reports and lots of communication and reminders. That were always, you know, regularly delivered to the mayor and to council.
All right, thank you. Any, any other questions or comments?
Um, I do. I was curious to what you guys feel like success looks like in this position and how you're measuring it.
Anyone wishing to respond? Well, again, I, I think as you have pointed out, the, uh, you know, Boulder City has kind of gone its own way. Here in Clark County for sixty years, uh, but we have been able to be successful in our way. And I guess that would be the way I would look at it, is how do we maintain that success that we've had? Even though we do have a different focus than some of the other cities in Clark County.
I agree. So I want to thank Mayor McManus, um, Mr. Bull and all of city council for this opportunity. I just haven't interviewed in fifteen years, so I hope I've done you all proud in this opportunity and invitation that you've given me today. And I'd really like to close, um, with just letting you know that although I live close by in Henderson. Uh, I was ac- I've actually been an active participant in Boulder City my entire life. In my youth, Boulder City was physically closer than Henderson proper. And so I spent my youth in your guys' swimming classes and your rec classes. And my family's favorite restaurants are pretty much all in Boulder City, so we're quite the regulars. I also think you guys have the very best ninety-nine cent store, so we don't host a party in our family without a visit to your guys' ninety-nine cent store. And lunch, of course, at Pit Stop. So I'm very familiar with you guys. I know I wasn't born there. But I highly respect your guys' vision. I love participating in your everything. You know, you guys do at Christmas incredibly well. And so I just, I'm eager to join your team and be a part of that. I'm proud of what you guys do as a spectator. And I'd also just like to join the team and be proud of you, I, proud with you guys instead of for you guys or, or just. I don't want to be an admirer from outside. I want to join your team and be a member, please.
Well, thank you. And, and again, I do appreciate you participating in this process. Um, we do have other interviews today and I'm sure we'll take some time to, you know, consider all of the candidates. But very much appreciate your participation in this today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bolt, may I ask? I did swear and affirm, promised to you that I wouldn't watch the meetings. Um, now that I've participated and I more or less can't cheat, may I watch the remaining interviews? Or would you guys like me to try and wait till the end when you deliberate your next steps?
Yeah, that instruction or request was to not give anyone an advantage. And since you've already interviewed, I don't think you'd have an advantage if you wanted to watch the rest.
I assume so, but I didn't want to default by any error.
I appreciate that.
Thank you all again very much and I hope you all have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I guess we will take fifteen minutes then to complete our evaluations. Uh, we will reconvene then at, uh, ten oh five. Thank you. All right, it's ten oh five. We will call the meeting back into session. And proceed with our next interview. Mr. Bolt?
Morning, Ms. Hannah. Can you hear me? And I just need you to unmute it on your end. Very good. That's good. Can you, can you hear me in?
Yes, I can.
And I can hear you. Very good.
Fantastic.
Good, then we'll get started if you're ready.
I think I am.
All right, so we have, uh, some formatted questions and then we'll, uh, ask the mayor and council if they have any follow-up or other questions. All right, we can get started. The city clerk is responsible for facilitating the work of the city council and all committees and commissions. By ensuring the preparation of agendas, minutes, maintaining records of meetings, informing residents of all. City council committee and commission actions and supervising city elections. The questions today will in large part measure your experience relative to those responsibilities. If you want me to reread a question, please just ask. But, and we'll, um, we can get started. How, how do you build effective working relationships with elected officials?
Oh, uh, it's very important. I think transparency and honesty is key. Um, I have always worked, I believe, with elected officials because I'm very honest with them. Um, I worked a lot with the mayor and council in Henderson while I was there and then the county commission prior to that. Also the secretary of state back in, was Dean Heller back then. Um, you, you just have to be willing to work with everybody, I believe. I think that, um, it's a, it's a nonpartisan office and so you want to remain the integrity of that nonpartisan office and promote. The, uh, council as well. Um, that's how I do it. I'm very honest.
Very good. Tell us about your expectations of a typical workday as city clerk.
Um, my previous expectations are probably the same as they are now. A lot of hours put in on top of your deadlines. And your legal obligations as well, um, also interacting with the public. Um, probably a few record requests at the same time while working with the county on the municipal elections. That have just switched while making sure all the agenda items are, are posted and we meet the open meeting laws. Um, I believe you do bilingual as well now, correct?
I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared for any questions today.
Oh, I apologize. Um, yeah, I mean, it, it was pretty constant before, working with our newspapers to get our legal notices out, meeting all of our, our, uh, brown. Open Meeting Law Acts, that sort of thing. Meeting with the council, making sure agenda items are prepared and noted in due time to be on the calendar and agenda.
What work experience do you have preparing, reviewing and editing city council and other public meeting agendas? Minutes, transcripts and legal notices?
Legal notices I did for about ten years and that was all three elections. Um, when we implemented two oh three of the Voting Rights Act, uh, we started working with the Latino Advisory Committee. To create our, uh, our Spanish bilingual legal notices, as well as our open meeting law, uh, notices as well for our, our meetings. Um, I did oversee the, uh, Blue Ribbon Commission for the, the city of Henderson. Um, my creating of agendas, I mean, I was generally the one that would add the election or, or, um. Election and lobby information to our agendas. We also had somebody who was in charge of records at the city of Henderson. So it, I would say that it is limited, but I have a basic understanding of one section of it, two sections of it. Um, following and having everything signed up, having it printed out. Uh, I was very fortunate in that I didn't, I, I'm not a minutes clerk, so I, I feel like I need to tell you that right now. I'm, I'm not fast with the hands. So I would generally record and then take word for word, although we do have minutes clerks in the city of Henderson as well. Although we do have minutes clerks in the city of Henderson as well.
Public meeting facilitation and support includes knowledge of Roberts Rules, parliamentary procedures, and the Nevada Open Meeting Law. What work experience do you have with these various elements of public meeting facilitation and support?
Again, limited with the, uh, city council, uh, much more with the city of Henderson. Very aware of the open meeting laws, um, city council codes and, um, sat with every meeting, um, would print final agendas, get them out there. That's the extent of it. Most of my last position was election administrative services, which oversaw the administrative services for the clerk's office as well.
Records management is an essential requirement of the city clerk. What work experience do you have with records manag-, I'm sorry, records lifecycle management?
Um, mine is probably a little bit different, but maybe a bit of the same. I was also the candidate filing coordinator for the county, all state seats, and the municipals. So, uh, I was in charge of keeping all contribution expense and ethics reports. Um, that was a seven-year cycle, and they were, uh, consistent on being prepared and out for the public. Um, very comfortable with the public records requests and storage of.
Related to the management of the office itself, please tell us your work experience developing a budget, hiring, training, managing employees to include holding employees accountable?
Well, there's a lot of that. Um, okay, so we'll start with managing. Um, when I took my position with the, uh, Clark County, I had been a temporary employee. I left restaurant management because I figured it was time to move on with my degree. Um, and I was a part-time temporary employee for Clark County. Uh, within a year, I became their, uh, their manager for the elections division, just because I had the tenacity and I was young enough to be there a hundred hours a week. I felt that there was a little bit of a, of a pushback because I was younger and had not been there quite as long and maybe not considered quite as experienced. So I felt the best thing in my approach was to really listen and get to know my team, understand the strengths and weaknesses, um, put myself out there as well, make sure that I was, did not ask anybody to do anything that I was not willing to do myself, including stay overnight sometimes, make sure all the ballots got out and there were no hanging chads. Um, and that same position, I had a gentleman who worked for me who was on his, uh, who did not have a, a good relationship, we'll say, with, with the, the management with the county. And, uh, there was a lot of continuous write-ups and, and mentoring, trying to get him back on, on track. Um, I spent probably a good six months working with him. He was an individual who did not particularly like that a young woman had gotten the job, we'll say, at that time. And so, um, and because he was constantly at odds, there was never any room for communication, which was not a good thing. Um, once we broke down those walls, he had excellent ideas on how to make our department move more smoothly. And so I always kind of approached it like write-ups and, and, um, and suspensions. You don't want to get to that point. You want to make people, you want to give them the opportunity to improve. In that particular case, he did, and he became such a wonderful ally for our department. I, I just cannot emphasize that enough, that if you treat people the right way, that, that you will work together well as a team. When I went to the city of Henderson, um, it was a new position that had been created, election administrative services. Um, that's when the city was growing quite a bit. They were building a new city hall, and they wanted to expand their lobby information services, so I took that over as well. Same time, we implemented passport acceptance program. So when I began in the city of Henderson, there was five permanent staff members. We took that to twelve permanent and I believe eight temporary, term temporary, part-time employees. Um, for me, it was, it was a challenge in that we were asking, uh, to train all these people on completely new skill sets, as opposed to what they had done as, as receptionary work for years. Um, but I also found it to be a, a wonderful experience because a lot of people are, want to grow and, and want to add to their, their work and, and change what they're doing. And then, in often cases, we were able to reclassify a lot of the positions, and it gave, uh, a lot of the staff ownership. So I believe that we worked together very well because, I hate to say we upped the ante, but we did. And we made the employees know that they were appreciated for the extra work they were really doing outside of their classification. Of course, there are people, there are always people that you have to begin the process with the, uh, the write-ups and the verbal warnings and that sort of thing. Um, generally, those work themselves out, but I have had to go the entire length of the process before and have an employee terminated. Nobody's comfortable with it, but sometimes it's necessity. I hope I answered the question and all that rambling. Please forgive me.
Thank you. Boulder City is close to a large metropolitan area, and there are a variety of other governments and regional boards in the area. Tell us about your work experience developing and maintaining intergovernmental relations.
Well, when I was with the city of, uh, I'm sorry, forgive me. When I was with Clark County, I used to run the municipal election, so I worked with all the city clerks. Um, it was important to have a good working relationship with them. Again, I also worked with the Nevada Commission on Ethics and the Secretary of State's office as well. So I'm, I'm very comfortable with working, um, with other areas within the cities, municipalities, and the county. Uh, I think that's how you, in that time, it was a good thing because they were all on the exact same page. If you called one city or another city, you were going to get the same answer regarding elections. Um, Boulder City does stand out on its own because of, you've done it right. You know, so it's always been, uh, Boulder City was the city that I was always like, okay, have the extra ballots because this is a town that's very engaged. This is a town that has almost a hundred percent turnout. Um, so it was always kind of like we wanted to try and focus, kind of almost mimic other cities against Boulder, which you really can't do because it's smaller structure. But I'm very comfortable working with others. Um, I still talk to some of the other clerks on occasion, but not in a work-related way. I can be a talker. I don't know if that's good or bad.
All right, uh, tell us about a time when you solved one problem but created others.
When I solved one problem, I created others. That's good. I've never been asked that before. Um, I would say when we implemented the Lobby Information Services Division. Nope, I'm going to take that back. When we implemented two oh three of the Voters Rights Act. Um, it was important because we had, I had created so much voter outreach material, so many materials that we sent out on a regular basis that that was still required to go out. Not required, but expected for the citizens. Um, so we created a problem by having all this tremendous voter outreach. Um, but then we had to provide double that amount on my, on my election balance, which I would have to, to create every year, my election budget, forgive me, not balance. Um, so while we had all this great voter information, voter information out there, we had to double it. Um, and so I just had to get really creative. Uh, I cut back on the voter guides that we were sending out to folks and made them like a newspaper. Um, I worked with our Printing Services Division to send out bilingual every month, um, voter registration, voter application, voter opportunities. Uh, so it was, we created so much and had such an interactive website at that time. We had to hire bilingual to come in and transform our website um, in order to meet the Department of Justice's, um, requirements. So the next election cycle, I did not produce as much written information. I, you know, we had always done beyond what was required by the law. The next election, I fell back to what was required by the law. Yeah. It's good to have everything out there until you're hit with double the cost.
All right, can you tell us about a time when you made a suggestion that was implemented in this field?
Um, yes, when we sat up, oh geez, there's been a few of them. One of them, I would go back to that. Um, we had a very low, low voter turnout. I'm sure you know that Henderson has very, very low voter turnouts. And I would go through and see what the numbers were. Um, because part of the job is voter outreach, or it was at that time. I believe it still is. And our numbers were incredibly low in the eighteen to twenty-five year bracket. So we created a local youth vote program, which was basically civic engagement course. And I would go to all the high schools and the colleges, um, and give civic engagement courses and how your council works for you and how important your, your mayor and council positions are to your everyday life and how important your local elections are to your everyday life. Um, and then I'd register them at age of seventeen and on, so that they would be registered for whichever election was coming up next. Um, it turned out to be great. We won the National Election Center's Best Practices that year, so that was great. Um, I'm very proud of that program. We were able to double the increase of that age bracket turnout. It didn't return because we got so many people involved. I didn't want to look as if we were skewing numbers. So then I started going to our senior centers, our parks and recs, everywhere that we could, that we could do civic engagement courses. So I was very proud of that, that we were able to double our turnout, get people more involved. Not everywhere places like Boulder City, that a lot of people don't know who their mayor and council are, don't know what's important, don't know who votes for what. So that was important for me to vote, for people to know, to have a little bit of civic connectivity to their elected officials.
Tell us the steps you take to monitor the quality of your work in your current job.
Oh, my current job, I, I volunteer. I just recently left. I was, uh, mom's demand, their data coordinator. Before that, I was their elections coordinator. It was all volunteer work. Um, with data management, you know, if you do something wrong, uh, it's going to come back immediately. I'm very comfortable with that. Um, my other current job is raising my daughter, and she hasn't gone through the roof yet after being home for a year. So I think she's doing okay. I monitor her. Um, prior to that, I, you know, I work with Spread the Word, and we've been on hiatus for a year, so I read to the students. So it's a difficult question for me to ask because right now, my job is all volunteering at home.
How would you define multitasking?
Oh, it's, uh, it's doing many things at once. And also letting others around you do those tasks, training everybody so that you have a competent team that can, that can jump in whenever they need to, cross-training. Um, I think that every day is multitasking. I think that there's always deadlines. There's always needs, and you have to go through and figure out what is most important and go from there. Um, again, I, I believe in sharing the workload so that everybody is comfortable. I'm not sure how large the staff is with the city clerk's office. Um, but I again think it's very important that everybody is cross-trained and that we are all doing the same thing. I, I believe that I have always been able to manage several different projects by following a legislative calendar, as I would call it, and I would have a daily one on everything that was required, whether it was a council meeting or a commissioners meeting or a planning meeting or this needed to be depressed by this date, or, you know, this, this, um, legal notice needed to be prepared. So as long as I always had that, I was good to go, and I would try and meet those obligations at least one week prior. I'm kind of OCD that way, I suppose, would be my answer.
Tell us about a time you anticipated potential problems and developed preventive measures.
Um, that would be with the city clerk's office. And it would probably be with the implementation of the passport service program because we didn't have the room and we had a lot of people interested. Um, so we immediately applied all of our positions at that time to take the passport training program and become passport agents because we knew that at some point, the majority of our permanent staff would be required. The idea was to have two to three people, um, but we knew that it was going to be probably all six to eight of the permanent staff members would have to be covering that area. And so we put them all through the training together. And thank goodness we did because it hit the ground running. I believe that you'd have passport acceptance in Boulder City as well. The passport acceptance program, maybe, yeah. Yeah, it's labor-intensive and time-intensive, and so that was something that we were able to say, okay, this is going to take quite a amount of time. And we're, you know, it is, it's, it's a money maker, brings in money for the, for the city, but, uh, you have to be willing to have the staff on hand, otherwise it's not going to take off running. And so we were fortunate that we did, that we cross-trained and didn't just do two people at a time like the original plan. If you want to start a program, I think you want it to be successful from the, from the get-go. And, uh, it's very important to have the, the communities trust in you and the faith in you that the program's going to go smoothly. And so we just went ahead and pushed for that automatically. Especially after I did the training, I said, oh, this is going to take at least half an hour per person. We're going to have to have some more people involved here.
All right, what are your short-term and long-term career goals?
Well, if you would have asked me this fifteen years ago, it probably would have been to retire from PERS at about fifty. I, however, married an officer in the Air Force, and we were sent to the Pentagon, so that all ended. Um, now it is just to, to stay here in Southern Nevada, see my daughter graduate, third, third generation, and then, uh, send her off to wherever she wants to go. Um, we probably would move back to Boulder City at some point. We lived up there prior to, to two thousand and six when everything crashed and we had to go to the Pentagon. So we, we live in Henderson now, but we're trying to get back up to Boulder. So that, our long-term goal is just to, just to keep on going.
All right, yes is the word citizens like to hear. However, if you had to say no, how would you do it?
Oh, with all the information available, because I think the most important thing that you can do is it, you need to explain why the answer is no. You can't just say no. You have to explain why. Um, generally, there's a reason for it. Can I put this on the agenda? No, and here's why. Here's the city code. Here's a, you know, here's the municipal code. Um, I think it's best that if you have to turn somebody down or say no, that you have credible reason why and that you're able to eloquently explain that to people as to why and provide them with the information they need to understand why that is.
Very good, thank you. Those are all the structured questions we had, Mayor. Um, I just turn it over to you for mayor and council.
Thank you. Any questions from council members? Um, I would ask, uh, you know, it appears that you've been doing a great deal of volunteer work or nonprofit work, um, over the past several years. How do you believe you would, uh, be making the transition, uh, into a, a full-time position like this?
Oh, I've been chomping at the bit for years to get back into it. Um, you know, I mean, i- i- if I may speak candidly, it's very difficult to, um, I mean, when you marry into the Air Force, which I did not understand at the time, you move a lot. And so it was very difficult at that time for me to jump right back into my career. It has always been the goal for me to go back to it. We have been at the point for five to six years now where we could go. I could go back to it, but our economy has not been great. Um, and so I've just been waiting to apply for the right positions. Um, and I want to stay in Southern Nevada, so this seemed like a wonderful opportunity. Um, nothing would make me happier or feel more sane to get back into a work environment with adults.
All right, uh, do you have any questions or comments for us?
No, I just, uh, think you guys are doing a great job. And I'm glad that you've kept Boulder the way that Boulder has been for as long as I can remember, so.
All right, any other questions or comments from council members? Well, a- again, I very much appreciate you taking the time to participate in this process. Uh, we do have a couple more interviews to do later today. Uh, and at that point, we'll be doing our evaluations and letting everyone know.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, have a good.
Bye-bye. All right, we are scheduled for- All right, we are scheduled for a break before our next interview, uh, with the interviews to resume at twelve-thirty?
However you'd wanna do that, I can probably get ahold of those last two candidates and adjust their time.
Okay, do you wanna try and take, uh, we will do one more interview and then take the lunch break?
Sure, sure.
All right, uh, we will take fifteen minutes to complete our evaluations on this candidate and reconvene then at ten forty-five. Thank you. All right, we've had a little bit of a change. We're going to go ahead with our third candidate interview at this time. Uh, and then following that, we will take a break for lunch and finish with the, uh, fourth candidate after that. Uh, Mr. Bolt?
Ms. McKay, can you hear me? You might need to unmute your, your device. Are you good? Can you hear me? I can see that you're still muted on your device.
Okay, now can you hear me?
Yes, now I can hear you. Very good.
Hold on, don't, don't go anywhere. Nobody else is hearing this, are they? I don't know what I'm doing here.
You're, uh, live and, as we always are here. Always assume you're live.
Oh, no, but this is really technical.
Yes, well, I'm sure you'll be fine. First off, thank you very much. I appreciate your flexibility. It's a couple hour difference, so I really do appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And, uh, so we can just get started, and then, uh, and then we have a number of formatted questions, and I'll turn it over to mayor and council for any follow-up questions they may have, and any questions you might have.
All right.
The city clerk is responsible for facilitating the work of the city council and all committees and commissions by ensuring the preparation of agendas, minutes, maintaining records of meetings, informing residents of all city council, committee, commission actions, and supervising city elections. The questions today will in large part measure your experience relative to those responsibilities. If you want me to reread a question, please just ask. How do you?
Okay, thank you.
Very good. We'll start with, uh, we'll start with number one. How do you build effective?
Can you, can you wait just one moment?
Certainly.
So, I, I don't see anybody, though. Is that normal?
Uh, I'm not sure what you'd see on your end. You...
Oh, now I do. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. I got it.
Very good, very good. All right. Uh, how do you build effective working relationships with elected officials?
I think you have to have really good communication. Um, I would want to have one-on-ones with each council member. Everybody has their different style of communication and do what is best for all of them.
Tell us about your expectations of a typical workday as city clerk.
My expectations, uh, first and foremost are to meet all deadlines.
Very good. What work experience do you have preparing, reviewing, and editing city council and other public meeting agendas, minutes, transcripts, and legal notices?
Um, I have seventeen years' experience doing that. I have, uh, been the deputy city clerk and worked very closely with the city clerk, worked in her absence. That's just been one of the functions and duties the entire time I've been deputy, and as well as, um, acting city clerk.
Very good. Public meeting facilitation and support includes knowledge of Robert's Rules, parliamentary procedures, and Nevada open meeting law. What experience do you have with these various elements of public meeting facilitation and support?
Well, I'll, I'll start with what I believe is the most important, and that's open meeting law. You cannot conduct a meeting without following all of the rules, um, throughout the open meeting law. And it, as a good city clerk, good city employee, you would constantly go through and review open meeting law. We kind of consider it our bible. Um, you cannot have a meeting without following all the rules. It would, it would not be a legal meeting. And as far as Robert's Rules, um, we use that daily or for, during any meeting. And I believe, um, I have good experience with that as well. I just recently completed through University of Wisconsin a parliamentary procedure program. And in addition, I am also now a member of the National Association of Parliamentarians.
Records management is an essential requirement of the city clerk. What work experience do you have with records lifecycle management?
Oh, we do that on a daily basis, and that's something that's actually reviewed, um, on an annual basis as well. We follow the state archives, uh, records retention, and, uh, if, if we believe that the city has a record series that we would like to, uh, maintain longer than what is required, or maybe that's not actually included in the state records retention series, uh, we will write up to the state and ask that it be included. So I have numerous years of experience with records retention and records management.
Related to the management of the office itself, please tell us your work experience developing a budget, hiring, training, managing employees to include holding employees accountable.
Um, with the budget, I, uh, that was something that I worked with, with the former city clerk, and I'm familiar with it. I actually maintain um, all of the records for our purchase requests, purchase orders, I process payroll. And as far as employees, I haven't personally hired any employees, but I've been in, um, through the process and been on the interview panel and did have a decision in the making of whomever would be selected for the office. And as far as, um, managing employees, I, I do that now, and I don't have any issues. We just set expectations and goals and, and follow them, so there haven't been any issues.
Boulder City is close to a large metropolitan area, and there are a variety of other governments and regional boards in the area. Tell us about your work experience developing and maintaining intergovernmental relationships.
Um, that's easy. I actually, um, have a really good relationship with folks at the LVCVA, the RTC, the Southern Nevada Health District. In fact, um, uh, one of the employees was just out the other day from Regional Transportation Commission, and and thank me, we work very closely together. We'll call one another if we have any questions, so I have a very, very good rapport with all of the agencies in Las Vegas, as well as Nevada League of Cities.
Tell us about a time when you solved one problem but created others.
Solved one problem but created others? I, I, I can't think of an example that where we've created other problems. Let me think about it just a minute. I, I don't have a specific example, but, but I know there have been cases where we might think that something's a good idea and implement something, and then throughout the time realize that there's unintended, unintended consequences, and then have to review and, and start over and revise the plan.
Tell us about a time when you made a suggestion that was implemented in this field.
Um, I made a suggestion not too long ago, um, that worked well, and that was, um, changing the whole process of when we get city council packets out to city council. It, for a, a time being, they were coming out just right before the weekend, and I knew that was, that really wasn't working for anybody. Now granted, it, it hasn't come out a lot earlier, but we've really strived, and I strive to get it out on either Tuesday or Wednesday prior to the council meeting, which I believe is a benefit to everyone involved, not only the council members to give them sufficient time to review, but the public also respects and appreciates it.
Tell us the steps you take to monitor the quality of your work in your current job.
Well, especially in my current job, um, with just being me in the office, I really depend on, um, other staff members. For instance, I work really closely with the city attorney's office, and I have to say, they've been very, very helpful, so most of my work, I actually, um, have reviewed by the city attorney's office and vice versa. We work very closely together. There's, there's a lot of working parts, and you don't wanna miss anything, so I, I would never, ever just depend on my own eyes.
How would you define multitasking?
Everything that comes in through the city clerk's office, I believe, is multitasking. Um, everything, uh, in the city clerk's office is driven by deadlines. So you have to be able to multitask and, and make sure that every single deadline is met. So you do whatever it takes, whether it's reminders on calendar, reminders on your day planner, um, reminding somebody else to help you remember. It's, too many deadlines, everything has to be met.
Tell us about a time you anticipated potential problems and developed preventive measures.
Well, I, I, I would say, and I, I don't know if it was with this counselor or not, but, um, one of the times was just not communicating well enough with council members. And I just believe everybody needs to be on the same page. You know, we work, all work as a whole for the city. Different parts, of course, but we're all public servants and uh, good communication with the council members, so it, it was something that I implemented to make sure that all council members are aware of any, anything that they could be asked out on the street, they need to be aware of. We never want the council to be surprised.
What are your short-term and long-term career goals?
Well, I guess the short term would be appointed a city clerk officially. Um, long-term goals, I, I, I really wanna make some changes in the city clerk's office. One would be, I would love to revisit, um, the retention for the email. I would really like to get a program that archives the emails. People seem to be really confused about it. City clerk's office understands it, but we also have to understand, we do it on a daily basis. Not everybody feels the same way. So I'd really like to implement a system that's just easier for everybody, and, and, and you don't have to think about it, and retentions would still be followed. Um, so that, that's the biggest thing I'd like to do, and then I really wanna work with the city attorney's office and cleaning up the city code. We, we've talked about that. That's really a goal of, of both the offices.
Yes is the word citizens like to hear. However, if you had to say no, how would you do it?
You know, I, I, I think really I strive at that. I really have good communication skills with the public. And I, I, you just put it in a way that you don't actually have to say no. You don't have to say yes either, but you, you, if it's something that we absolutely cannot do, I just redirect them and then offer different solutions. I don't think you absolutely have to say no. That, that there's a nice way where it's a win-win for everybody, and I, and I've done that. I have examples of that. Uh, uh, one of the examples I have, um, there was a an elder lady, lady who came in about two years ago, and she was very upset. It was, it was maybe longer than two years ago. It was after the rate increases went up, and um, she was very upset, and she was on a budget, and so of course, I can't tell her, well, we're not gonna charge you for your utility rates. But what I did is I offered her solutions that she wasn't aware of. I offered her that we have a, a, an equal payment plan. And she was very thankful. She left there feeling very satisfied. So again, I didn't tell her, uh, no, you don't have to pay your bills anymore, but I offered her a solution.
That's the last of the structured questions we had, so I'll turn it over to the mayor and council in case they have follow-up questions.
Thank you. Uh, any questions from council members? Um, I guess my question, uh, that I would have for you is I know you have been here a number of years. You mentioned in a couple of your answers that uh, there are some changes that you would look to work on within the clerk's office. Um, how about with the city itself? Uh, you've been here for a number of years. Anything that you see with the operation of the city as a whole that you would like to, uh, maybe make some recommendations for?
I don't necessarily think as a whole, other than I think keep the lines of communication open. I think it's really important that none of us get siloed. Uh, we, we're all working for the, the better of the government, and we want to all be good public servants, so I would just say just keeping lines of communication open, no siloing. And feeling comfortable enough to offer suggestions and take suggestions myself to make it better.
All right, thank you. Um, any comments or questions you have for us?
I, I don't think so, but I, 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 I did wanna just mention, and I should have mentioned this at the very beginning, so I'd like to mention it now. Um, just in, um, for transparency sakes, regarding, uh, NRS two eighty-one A, I would like to say that I do have a pecuniary interest, um, being a city employee, and of course, a personal interest in, in this position today.
All right, thank you. Um, as you know, we, uh, still have, uh, one more candidate to interview today, and we will then complete all of our evaluations, and once that's done, uh, we'll be in touch with each of the candidates.
Okay, and I'd like to say, um, thank you. It's really been an honor and a pleasure serving as your acting city clerk, and I would really relish the opportunity for professional growth and to remain in this position.
Well, thank you, and thank you for, uh, participating in this process.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Have a great day.
Yep. Bye-bye.
Bye.
All right, at this time then, uh, we will go into recess, complete our evaluations, break for lunch. And Mr. Bolt, what time, uh, do you have the last candidate scheduled?
He, he's available at one o'clock.
One o'clock. All right, uh, we are in recess until that time then. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we are back in session now, and we will be doing the final interview for the city clerk candidates. Mr. Bolt?
Yes, sir, we, um... Good day, sir. Can you hear me? Tom, can you hear me? I'm sorry, so can you un, unmute your device?
We are unmuted. How's that?
You are unmuted, yes, definitely. Thank you very much. Good, good. Well, thanks for joining us today, and more importantly, I appreciate your flexibility and time, sir.
Not a problem.
Very much appreciate that, so. Uh, we can get started if you're ready.
I am ready.
Good, we have a few, uh, structured questions, and I'll turn it over to the mayor and council in case they had any follow-up questions, or if you had questions for them. The city clerk is responsible for facilitating the work of the city council and all committees and commissions by ensuring the preparation of agendas, minutes, maintaining records of meetings, informing residents of all city council, committee, and commission actions, and supervising city elections. The questions today will in large part measure your experience relative to those responsibilities. If you want me to reread a question, please just ask.
No problem.
How do you build effective working relationships with elected officials?
Uh, communication, that's the key. Uh, uh, being personable, number one. Uh, and for me, as an individual, I try to keep it light as possible. I, like, I'm somewhat of a, a jokester, and, uh, you know, keep everybody comfortable, 'cause once everybody's comfortable, everybody is communicating. You don't want people to be on your heels. You don't wanna be on your heels, but you wanna keep your ears open, and be a, being a good listener is key, uh, and that's one of the things. Almost sixteen years in my profession, I've learned to listen. And I'm not proficient at it. I'm still striving to be perfect at it, because you could hear the same question a hundred different times from a hundred different peoples, and people, and you think you've heard it before, you know the answer, but every situation, maybe slightly different. but every situation may be slightly different and usually is. So, the key is in communication is being a good listener and that way you become a good communicator because now you have digested what the situation is at hand. And that's one thing I pride myself on and once again, I'm striving for. I don't think perfection will ever be within a grasp of any of us, but we all have to strive.
All right, tell us about your expectations of a typical workday as city clerk.
Oh, that's one of the things I love, a typical workday. I don't think there is such a thing in my profession and in a clerk's office. You have your daily duties, your weekly duties, your quarterly, your semi-annual, your annual. But once you pick up that phone, then it's the mayor or a trustee or an alderman, council member if you will, committee member. Your whole day could take a right turn or a left turn and that's what you have to be prepared for. You have to be on top of your daily duties, your quarterly, you got to know what's coming. You have to know what's on horizon and then being able to prioritize as you go. And prioritizing is a key. So, you can't lose sight of what you need to do today and put off till tomorrow because you need to get it done. So, a typical day could be anything in a clerk's office. Once you get an email, once you get a telephone call, somebody walks through that front door, things can change, but you have to keep it all in perspective, deal with what is at hand and don't lose sight of what is on the horizon and what you need to accomplish and what has to be done. And prioritizing is the key to that. And that's one thing I've learned with my experience over the years.
What work experience do you have preparing, reviewing, and editing city council and other public meeting agendas, minutes, transcripts, and legal notices?
Extensively. With the city of Berwyn, for 12 years as an elected clerk, that position comes by state statute. And I also become the township clerk and the health board secretary, which are three separate entities, three separate taxing bodies, three forms of government if you will, acting under separate sections of the Illinois state statute. So, all were a little different, but once again, we have what we call the Opens Meeting Act that applies to our open meetings and our agendas and everything else. That was always the same, but I did the agendas for the city council meetings, the township board meetings, and the health district meetings for 12 years. I continue to do that. I do not put the agenda and the packets together for the village of Maywood. We're a manager form of government and that comes out of the manager's office. But we are in charge of posting and publishing that and maintaining that and maintaining those records. As far as minutes, I did all three for the city of Berwyn and I do for the village of Maywood. I have a clerk. Be honest with you, my clerk lost her election and today was the first day of my new clerk in my office. So, I greeted her for the first time. So, the deputy is basically runs the clerk's office in the village of Maywood. It's an elected position as clerk and that is strictly a part-time position. So, the deputy is actually the day-to-day operations of the clerk's office. I have all the powers of the clerk in the clerk's absence and without the clerk's absence. I can enact everything that I need to enact that the clerk does. So, that is extensive, 16 years. What I did in the city of Berwyn, we did that by scratch. And what I am most proud of in 2006, less than a year after I took office, what I was able to do is take those agendas and those board packets and all the materials that you as the mayor and council people have before you and publish that and put that on the city of Berwyn's website. We did all that with Adobe. We did not purchase any software. We did that with our IT department and out of the clerk's office. So, what we did is we put those agendas online and all that backup material and linked that to the agendas for both the public and the council members. Unfortunately, paper was still king back in the city of Berwyn and it is to this day. Same with the village of Maywood, but it is available for the trustees in Maywood and it was available for the council members in Berwyn to do it both online. They could do it from their laptop or notebook at the meeting or they could put the hard copies before them. So, did both, did all three. I had my Witching Fridays, as I called it, in the city of Berwyn, which I had to put out a city council agenda, a township meeting agenda, and a health board meeting agenda, all on the same Friday afternoon, all before 1:00 to meet our open meetings deadlines, to have all that published and put on the website 48 hours prior, so.
Public meeting facilitation and support includes knowledge of Robert's Rules, parliamentary procedures, and Nevada Open Meeting Law. What experience do you have with these various elements of public meeting facilitation and support?
Once again, extensive is city clerk in Berwyn. I attended all the meetings for all the three entities that I serve under. The village of Maywood, our clerk attends that meeting and records those proceedings and we work off of that at our office and we prepare the minutes out of that. But we have what we call the Opens Meeting Act in the state of Illinois. You probably have a different version in the state of Nevada. Once again, different. I'm not 100% familiar with what you have there, but I do have extensive experience with researching and absorbing the state statute because once again, when I do in Illinois, I was acting under three separate forms of the state statute. So, over the years, I've more than adequately became proficient at digesting the state statute and applying it to the situation at hand.
Records management is an essential requirement of the city clerk. What work experience do you have with records lifecycle management?
Once again, extensive, 16 years' experience with the city and now with the village of Maywood. That is part of our job to maintain all the records of the municipality. And we have with our Opens Meeting Act and our records with our Secretary of State, we have what we call a retention and a destruction schedule. So, everything that we maintain is, it's personal to the village of Maywood. It was personal to the city of Berwyn. It is registered with the Secretary of State. What we need to keep, how long we need to keep it, and when we could destroy it. And we could not destroy anything without the express permission written in advance from the state of Illinois. So, once again, I do have extensive experience with that. And one of the things that I did in the city of Berwyn, I was able to take all of our minutes and agendas from the, what we were incorporated in 1908. And one of my predecessors had put all of those records on microfilm and I took all those microfilm records, had them digitized, downloaded, and put into a searchable database on the city of Berwyn's website. So, not only did we have the current records, which we already had since I had came into office from 2005 to current, but I put that all the way back to basically 1908. It was a little sketchy back then from what they were able to save and discern, but it's all there and I was able, and it's one of the things I'm most proud of before I left office in Berwyn, is that I had that all on the city of Berwyn's website in a searchable database. Basically, all the city minutes from the incorporation in 1908 till current.
Related to the management of the office itself, please tell us your work experience developing a budget, hiring, training, managing employees, to include holding employees accountable?
Once again, I want to use the term extensive, but 16 years' experience and especially with the city of Berwyn in my 12-year, 10-year there. I did manage not only the budget for the city clerk's office, but for the township clerk's office and the health board's office. So, worked extensively with the budgets for the clerk's offices in all three of those entities. Worked with the current clerk in the village of Maywood to put her budget together. Not only that, our clerk in the clerks of Illinois, we take your appropriation ordinance or your budget and it is our responsibility to not only maintain it, but to file it with the state of Illinois and the Cook County within our county here in Illinois. And so, that is our responsibility. But, and then with office management, fortunately, unfortunately, when I came into office back in 2005, it was a three-person, a clerk, deputy, and an assistant. And unfortunately, it was like that for many, many, many years. And the one hand did not know what the other hand was doing. I quickly made that known that everybody knows everybody's job. Everybody's able to do the other person's job in their absence or in the necessity of having to do that. And it didn't always work so well early on because once again, I was working with people that were kind of ingrained. So, we got through that and I made sure everybody was on the same page. And then it was somewhat of a revolving door in my office unfortunately for several years. So, I was bringing in new people. The person that I originally came in under retired. And then the person that was under her who said, oh, I never knew what she did and she never shared anything. Well, I instructed her, okay, well now this new person, we're bringing them in and we're training them. Well, this person went and did the same thing her predecessor did before her and she kept it all to herself. But I found that out and I was none too happy and we corrected that. So, we got it to where everybody's on the same page. And my philosophy in my office, and it still remains, I will never ask anybody to do something that I am not capable of doing myself. But that doesn't mean you don't do it and I have to. I make sure that you are fully understanding of what needs to be done and I will instruct you and help you if you don't know on how to get to that end. And then I will work with you and I will work with you as long as need be till you have that ability and you are proficient at it. And I always have an open door and if you are stuck on something, come back to me. We'll work it out together. Some things, there's not everything I know. I mean, like you said, in the clerk's office, you get hit with something. It might be, still after 16 years, you get hit with something new on more than one occasion. And it happens a lot. So, you have to work together. So, you have to work as a team and once again, communication. I like to keep it light, I like to keep everybody smiling. I like to smile a lot, I like to see people smile around me. And that tends to happen when your office is working the way it should and you're doing your job and everybody's on the same page. It can be a happy work environment, but when it's not, I become serious and people will understand that I am serious. The smile kind of goes away, we get down to business because once again, we are there to serve. And in this case, to serve the people of Boulder City. And that's our number one priority. So, we got to do our job because that's what we're getting paid to do. We're not getting paid to have a happy workplace. We like to have a happy workplace, my goal is to have a happy workplace, but our job is to get our job done and get it done sufficiently and efficiently, so.
Boulder City is close to a large metropolitan area and there are a variety of other governments and regional boards in the area. Tell us about your work experience developing and maintaining intergovernmental relationships.
Well, similarly, here in Berwyn, we are literally seven and a half miles stone's throw from the western border of the city of Chicago, which is quite a large metropolitan area. So, we work within Cook County, which we all are part of that. So, my experience is extensive. Within the city of Berwyn, it was extensive because within the city of Berwyn, we had city government. Our park districts were separate. Not only that, we had what they call a north and a south district, park district. Same thing with our grammar school districts. We had two elementary school districts. We had a high school district that is not only was within the city of Berwyn, but it was in four other neighboring municipalities. So, our high school district encompassed five municipalities. Park districts, school boards, we had a community college board that once again encompassed five municipalities. So, once again, my job in the city of Berwyn, and it is in the city of, the village of Maywood now because it's a similar situation, not as complex as it was in Berwyn, but my job was to maintain intergovernmental communication, if you will. Especially with the township and the health board, which I was serving as an individual, but once again, we have a mayor here, we have a township supervisor here, we have a health board president there. So, we had three governmental bodies that I was the sole link to, if you will, that had to work together. So, we had a lot of intergovernmental cooperation. And you would think, okay, well, we are what we call co-terminus in Berwyn, to help you better understand. And so, our borders of the township, the health district, and the city were all the same. But once again, three separate entities. And not to say politicians, I was one, you know. Not everybody gets along, not everybody has the same idea. But once again, it was for the city of Berwyn. So, it was my job to keep all of those at the table, those three entities. And a lot of times, my mayor and my township supervisor didn't even want to say hello and greet each other, let alone sit at the same table and work at a common goal. So, it was basically my job and I did it well to keep everybody communicating, keep everybody together and keep everybody informed. And that, once again, you know, went over into the school districts, you know, city of, village of Maywood now, we have a separate park district. We have a separate library board. City of Berwyn, the library was under the city's umbrella. So, I have extensive knowledge under many different situations working with other governmental entities. And once again, you got to work with the city of Chicago because we are a stone's throw. So, what happens in Chicago ultimately affects everybody around us. And the problem in the suburban communities around Chicago, they think, because Chicago does it this way, everybody does it that way. They don't even understand the form of government in the town that they are living, which is separate from that big city of Chicago. So, communication with our own residents is key in some respects because they look, you have Las Vegas, Nevada. Your government and your rules and regulations might be similar, but different. And you know, people say, well, we're in Las Vegas. No, you're not, you're in Boulder City. So, the residents have to understand that distinction and sometimes they don't. So, that communication is also key, not only with other governmental officials, but with your residents as well.
Tell us about a time when you solved one problem, but created others.
Ooh, that's a toughie. That one to come off the top of my head. I hear, I could be brutally honest, it was a problem and it did resolve itself quite quickly, but it was something I overlooked in my third election cycle as the city of Berwyn. We have complicated form of government, a complicated ballot. We have what we call Democrats, Republicans. We have primary, we have primary elections here, we have general elections. Once again, the residents sometimes don't even understand what is going on. It's different from the city of Chicago, it's different from our neighboring communities. So, I had a fairly new deputy that was very competent and I had all the confidence in the world. And I said, okay, here you go. I explained everything and I says, I'm going to give this to you. And she did it and I supervised it. I overlooked a candidate that had filed a petition for an office within my office, which then it was my job to certify that candidate to the county election authority to be put on the ballot. I certified that ballot and I left off a candidate because of our complicated forms of government. There was a primary and there was a general. But the certification for that ballot, all is simultaneous. And she had everybody, you know, we had all the different people that were running under Democrat. We had all the different people that were running under independent and everything else. But then there was an independent Democrat. It was a different form that was outside of the political parties, a person that just came in off the street that was seeking office. And we looked at everything, I double-checked. She put all that paperwork in front of me, but she left those petitions out of there. So, I overlooked it and I certified that ballot. And I just knew something was wrong. After I hit send and I confirmed with the county, I looked at it and the next day I walked in the office and I says, I made a major mistake. And I quickly corrected it. I contacted the county clerk's office, the head election authority for our county. I made sure that candidate's name did get certified to the ballot. I got the corrected paperwork and the corrective certification there. But for a brief second, yes, I did leave a candidate off and that was what I would call a cardinal sin in my profession. And it was because I took a little step back. And you know, in the supervisory role, I was a little overconfident. And once again, the paperwork that was put in front of me, everything was good except that paperwork was not in front of me. And I had to sit back and I go, something is wrong here. And I had it in the back of my mind and I quickly discerned what happened. And we corrected it and everything was fine with the county. We still met all the timeframes and everything else. But once again, it was that brief second, I made a major mistake, but I caught it and I corrected it immediately. And everything went on fine and... And I will swear to God that that'll never happen because once you put yourself in a situation like that, it will never happen to you again. You will double check, triple check, quadruple check, which I did in the last three election cycles with the village of Maywood. And I will almost overly, uh, check my work, uh, before I submit it, which is a good thing. And, uh, i- it was a good learning experience. Making mistake, best way to learn is, uh, making that mistake and, uh, having to live with it, correcting it. And in this case, it all, it all turned out fine.
Tell us about a time when you made a suggestion that was implemented in this field.
Oh, numerous times. I mean, I went back to where I put the, uh, I, I put the agendas in all the board packets. Believe me, uh, my mayor at the time did not wanna be transparent. Uh, he did not feel it was necessary to do that. It was not only did I have to sell it to him, I had to sell it to o- other members of the council. But ultimately it was the right thing to do and everybody knew it. Uh, uh, for their own various personal reasons, they didn't want to do it or they felt that they didn't need to do it. But ultimately, uh, it, it was a good thing and we were ahead of the curve back then. I did that in two thousand and six. Uh, it's still not mandated in the state of Illinois that you do it. But I would say ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of the municipalities are now that transparent. Uh, we have what we call watch group groups that will come in and look at your information and what information you have on your website and they rate you. And they, they'll put that out there. And, uh, we got a very high rating with the city of Berwyn and a very high rating with the village of Maywood. So once again, uh, yes, it was the right thing to do. It was a good thing to do, uh, but not everybody saw that. Uh, and, uh, the main obstacle was the mayor at the time was adamantly against it. Uh, another, I wanted to, uh, videotape and, uh, put on YouTube. Now you put them on YouTube, your meetings, as you're doing right now. Uh, until two years ago, the city of Berwyn didn't do it because the subsequent mayor was more than adamant about not video. You know, I had, I had a franchise agreement with our cable company to bring us the cameras. The only thing we had to supply were the actual cameramen to put it live. We would add, we would add our own station on the, on the cable, uh, station here. Nope, he nixed it and, uh, that never happened. And it didn't happen until I was out of there. And it basically, he was forced to do it because everybody else is doing it around him. And he was being called out at it, about it at the time. So not every suggestion, uh, flew. And, uh, in this case, uh, it was the right thing to do and it was the right time to do it. And I, I got it accomplished.
Tell us the steps you take to monitor the quality of your work in your current job.
Uh, once again, uh, I walk into my office every day. Uh, it's a little easy because I walk out of the office the night before knowing what I have to do the next day. So before, before I leave my office, that last five minutes, ten minutes is putting everything in order, clearing my mind of all the things that have transpired throughout the day. And sometimes I have to go off to that meeting at night. But I'll still have that desk set and I'll have those reminders set up. And I'll have, uh, key things remind me what tomorrow brings. And then when I walk into the, the office in the day, we have that sit there. We, we, it's sitting there waiting for me. But then once again, I log on to that computer and I start looking at those emails. Sometimes it quickly gets me off that, that train or that trail, if you will. And you have to get back on it. So you have to maintain your, uh, your focus in a clerk's office. And you have to, uh, prioritizing is always key.
How would you define multitasking?
Ah, being a juggler in a circus, that's, uh, in a, in a clerk's office, uh, being a clerk, uh, that you have to be good at. So, uh, once again, you have to have, uh, sometimes people looked, look at my desk and they say, oh my God, what a clutter. No, I know what everything is on that desk and everything is on that desk for a reason because everything on that desk needs its attention. And then I have my piles of things that are, need immediate attention and, but they're all there, they're in view. And so out of sight is out of mind. I keep them in sight and in mind. Uh, it's a little easier today with computers, your cell phones, set up reminders, notices, meeting notices, notifications, that helps you. But you can't rely on that all the time because it is technology and technology does sometimes fail. So he- multitasking is, uh, i- i- is, uh, almost a daily occurrence, if not a daily occurrence in a clerk's office. And it's something you have to be good at and proficient at. And once again, it's one of those things, I'm almost perfect at, but still striving. Because, uh, once again, I, I, I don't know if we could ever be perfect on everything we do. And I'm always striving and always working towards that. Uh, relaxing your mind, uh, is sometimes the worst thing to do. Uh, keep your mind active, keep your mind active on your work. Keep your, uh, eye on the goal, uh, your eye on the prize, if you will, and, uh, keep focused.
Tell us about a time you anticipated potential problems and developed preventive measures.
Uh, well, we have a freedom of information request. We have a freedom of information act in the state of Illinois. We call them FOIS. It's information requests, which you probably have there, you might call it something else. Uh, that has changed numerous times over the years in my tenure. Uh, what had happened back in the, uh, around two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, uh, the state of Illinois brought in the attorney general's office to oversee it. They brought in what they called the PAC, the, uh, public access counselor to bring public complaints. So if you don't feel a municipality has satisfactorily answered your freedom of information request, you have the right to appeal that to the attorney general's office, the PAC office. Uh, needed to be done. Transparency is key in government. It wasn't in the state of Illinois. When I came in in two thousand and five, it was in its infancy. Basically you do what you want with those freedom of information requests. They, some more times were answered, sometimes they were not. Once again, we all now know that's not right. Uh, we have to have transparency, people are entitled to those documents. State of Illinois, I would like to say, uh, went a little overboard on that. And they put in a lot of mandates, unfunded of course, uh, and a lot of restrictions. And, uh, the onus is on the clerk's office to perform. Uh, they were a little unfair. I was lucky enough, in my office, we were a bigger municipality. But I was part of the municipal clerks of Illinois, I was an officer with them on their legislative board. I was very active, which is, our municipal clerks of Illinois is with the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, uh, which governs of all, all of our organizations. So we lobbied the, uh, legislature in the state of Illinois. We went down to Springfield in the state of Illinois and, uh, we sat down with those senators and those, uh, state representatives and the attorney general's office at the time and explained to them because they didn't understa- you know, they wanted an end, but they didn't know what it was, the onus that was put on the individual clerk's office. We have a lot of municipalities that are what we call one horse counts. I mean, some of the clerks are strictly part-time. Some village halls are literally out of a rented garage, if you will. The, the clerk works out of their house in some situations. They don't have IT operations and, uh, you know, uh, th- they, they have three hundred people, two hundred people. There's a mu- couple municipalities with a couple dozen people. Well, that law was broad and it was brought down on everybody and, and, and the, uh, the strain on some of my fellow clerks, including my own office, were just, i- i- it just couldn't be done. It had to be done because now they enacted that. But we made the state legislature see how to come to the end. We, you wanted transparency, we needed to update those, uh, freedom of information act. I, I applaud what they did, but they had to understand from a working end, how to implement that and what it was going to take for individuals to comply with that. The burden was just too great. So we got them to relax, not, some people look at it to relax. We got it, we, we have, uh, we have extensions now. We have, uh, uh, things that are implemented in there that give us time as clerks in clerk's office. We do not have to meet that streak five business days guideline. Uh, we have what we call voluminous requests where somebody just puts a laundry list, two pages long, fifty bullet points in one freedom of information request. Well, you know what, that's nice, it's one request, but, uh, there's nobody that can handle that. And unless we wanna just put all hands on to freedom of information request and stop functioning as a municipal government. Uh, so we have what we have extensions, we have where we could, uh, uh, have them um, amend their request to make it workable. Uh, we can declare people, uh, recurrent requesters. Uh, a lot of municipalities, you probably have it in there, the same person coming in there, week after week, day after day, just hitting you with a freedom of information, a freedom of information request. We got the state to declare them frequent requesters, which gives us more time. It gives us sixty days to work with these people because they are now declared ahead of time as a recurrent requesters and there's thresholds to make them get there. But I worked with the state of Illinois, uh, legislature, my fellow clerks with the attorney general's office to make those laws and that legislation work for everybody. So now it's still tough on a lot of those small municipalities, but at least it's doable. And, uh, the, the means is there to make it work for everybody, not only for the recor- re- requestor, the public, but for the entity that has to deal with them. Uh, because, uh, uh, freedom of information request, I don't know if you see my resume. Uh, I think I have fourteen thousand in there. You could throw maybe fifteen, make that number fifteen or sixteen thousand requests in my tenure that I've handled. Uh, they just don't stop coming, they're part of life, you have to deal with them. But what I, what I was able to accomplish with my colleagues in the state of Illinois and, uh, sat there with the state legislature and made them understand what it, what it takes to get this done. And we took an end and got us there so that we all, all could do, do our jobs and still function as a municipality and not have to sit there and deal with freedom of information requests all day long.
What are your short-term and long-term career goals?
Uh, short-term, uh, probably all wondering why, why am I looking in the state of Nevada to, uh, leave what I have here? Uh, I'm never gonna retire. So that my long-term goal is to stay active. I love my job. I got in this as a politician and quickly learned that, my God, this isn't a political position. This is a real job. And I learned that everything in life up until that point prepared me for that. I was a coach, I was a USA swim coach, a basketball, baseball coach. Uh, I worked with parents organization in my, my parish at a young age of eighteen. We had what we called the Young Men's Club. I became an officer and I was at nineteen, the youngest president ever of that organization. So I kinda said, wow, everything in life prepared me for this. I love being a municipal clerk, I love it. Uh, up until today, it wasn't so much fun in the village of Maywood. The clerk, my previous clerk, uh, was a handful to work for. And I was not happy and I was not going to work on a regular basis as a happy individual. I believe the new clerk is gonna be much better, uh, as it, as it seems, but time will tell. Uh, bottom line is, I'll never retire. Uh, you guys are all out in the state of Nevada, I'm sitting here in the Midwest. Uh, we have what we call four seasons, sometimes in one week. I've had the dubious distinction of living through the seven worst snowfalls in the, uh, Chicagoland area history, of which the seventh just happened in early, early February, just after Groundhog's Day and we got hit with twenty-four inches of snow. It's no longer fun here in the Midwest. So I'm probably never gonna be like a, uh, uh, a snowbird from New York or the Midwest that goes down to Florida for six months a year and then comes back up here. Uh, so, and I'm not gonna be able to retire, so I might as well go to a community that I would love to retire in, but be a, a, a productive member of that society and working. So, uh, Nevada is on a short list of places I'd love to end up in my life. Uh, so why not end up in Nevada? And being a productive member and working in a job that I love and I would love to do this, uh, till the day I die, literally, because that's how much I enjoy it. Uh, so those are my short-term goals, uh, and my long-term goals. Uh, one of the key factors in that is the state of Illinois and their pension program. Uh, based on, uh, the, the pension laws, uh, basically I have a year and a half to work for the village of Maywood. And if I work any longer, it's gonna negatively impact my pension because of the way it, it is situated. Because my salary was so much greater with the city of Berwyn than it is now. I will, uh, be losing, uh, if you will, mega dollars out of my pension if I stay and work in a municipality in the state of Illinois, uh, approximately another sixteen, seventeen months. So basically I gotta get out of the state of Illinois. Uh, why not be a municipal clerk somewhere else? I love it, I love my job, I love what I'm doing, I love working with the people and I love working with individuals like yourself. It truly is a pleasure for me, by the way.
Thank you. Yes is the word citizens like to hear. However, if you had to say no, how would you do it?
Uh, with the truth, uh, came up numerous times. Uh, could probably say that, uh, my, I lost my, by the way, I lost my two thousand and seventeen primary election by, uh, eighty-one votes, which was less than one percent of the vote. And I could tell you that, uh, probably the people that I had to say no, uh, cost me an election. But that was something I was fine with because, uh, at the end of the day, you have to look yourself, you have to look at yourself in the mirror and you have to know you're being honest. So I've had many people, and it happens all the time in the village of Maywood, they come in there, they are, oh, they are hell-bent. They are not happy for whatever the various reason is. So number one, you educate them of the situation and why they're unhappy. And you gotta explain, well, this is what has to be, this is the local law. This is why you got a ticket, this is why you got a violation, this is why you got a code violation. Uh, this is why you cannot have a handicap parking sign. Uh, you don't meet the requirements. So if you're honest with and open with people and you do it with respect, they might not be happy when they leave your office, but they know that you have, they've been dealt fairly with, they've been dealt honestly with and openly with, and they feel better about the situation. So they might not be happy, if you will, uh, but they know the reason why they were unhappy and why we cannot rectify it as they see, they want it done, uh, you know, when they walk into your office. You know, so basically, once again, it bears down to communication.
Thank you, sir. That's the end of our structured questions. And now I'll turn it over to the mayor and council for, in case they have follow-up questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bold. Um, any questions from council members? Uh, one question that comes to my mind is, you know, you had mentioned you're in a relatively small community, uh, right next to Chicago, uh, also within Cook County. Uh, that is a similar situation to what we have here in Boulder City. Uh, could you expand a little bit on, uh, how your government at your level deals with, uh, the county government, Cook County?
Well, you have to, you have to work together. So, uh, 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 the, the jobs are intertwined. Uh, of course, what the county does in the state of Illinois, we have home rule. I don't know if you're home rule out there. That means, uh, we in both the village of Maywood and the city of Berwyn can enact their own laws. So what we have, uh, the voters will decide and they have decided in both, uh, communities that you are home rule. So we have our own ordinances, which can't be more restrictive than the state or the county. But you, once again, you have to follow all the state legislation and all the state statutes and the county because you're within that arm of government. And, uh, then you have your local legislation. Uh, and like I say, you cannot be less restrictive in the state of Illinois, but you can be more restrictive. So once again, uh, education, educating your public, educating your voters or your residents of, of, of the differences that, uh, you know, that Boulder City has versus the, you know, uh, uh, the city of Las Vegas, Nevada. And just to let you know, Berwyn isn't that small. We're officially about sixty-nine thousand. I'm expecting this latest census is gonna bring us up to about seventy-three, seventy-four thousand. And we're three and a half square miles. We are the densest by population community in the, in the United States. And it's just a community of homes, little, little or no industry. Uh, just basically, uh, shopping districts and high school. Uh, yeah, we have a lot of apartments, a lot of single-family homes and we're compacting here. So, uh, yeah, we're small, but we're seventy thousand plus in the city of Berwyn. Village of Maywood is a little farther out west and a little bit more spread out. And they're, they're at about twenty-nine, thirty thousand. But once again, we're all in that same county, we're all under that same state. once again, we're all in that same county. We're all under that same state statute that you guys, basically the same situation. So I'm quite familiar with functioning. And once again, everything is key to communication and education, educating your residents, educating your voters.
All right. Thank you. Do you have any comments or questions for us?
No, I'm assuming you're a mayor form of government out there?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I like. I mean, it's what we have in the City of Berwyn. And right now, I'm working under Village Manager Form of Government.
Well, I will-
I suppose it's a kind of both, but I-
I will correct that. We are a council manager form of government here.
Oh, you are? Okay. So you do have a city manager?
Yes.
So the day-to-day is on the city manager, not yourself?
Correct.
Okay, good. So it is similar, then?
Yes. Any other questions you have for us?
Nope. I know I am not a young man, if you will. And I know you were probably looking for someone who had a college degree. I don't have a college degree, and I am not a young man. But I do have a lot of experience, and I have a lot of experience in learning and being able to learn. I mentioned the fact that I was a swim coach and a baseball coach. Never was formally in a swimming arena. I had two lovely children. I got into athletics. They chose aquatics. And the YMCA, which was my local, did not have what it takes. I went and became a US-certified and a USAA Swim Coach and YMCA Swim Coach. I did book training. I learned. I kept my eyes open. I talked to people. And I became one of the premier coaches in the State of Illinois in this area to the fact where the YMCA no longer wanted me because they thought I brought elitist swim team to their thing. And it wasn't. It was just that I took a okay swim team and made them very good, very quick. And it was still open to everybody. And it's like that open-door policy that you guys have. We all have it in our municipalities. So what I did, with little or no formal training, other than what I sought, I accomplished. I accomplished it well. And I went on. Life goes on. The YMCA no longer wanted me because they didn't feel I was doing what they were, their goals were. Again, I was. And they saw that at the end, and they saw that after I left. And their swim program has never been the same since. But that's the way they chose it. That's the way they saw it at that time. So I have that ability. That's when I, I'll go back to what I said, everything in life prepared me for being a municipal clerk, because it kind of did. Working with parents, working, coaching Little League. And then we went on as my son grew and the other kids grew, up until that pony where they're teenagers and I'm working with the high school coaches, because I got their kids in the summer and everything else. So a lot of dealing with parents is just like dealing with the public and your residents. So once again, it prepared me for what I am today and what I love to continue to be. And I would love to continue to be that for a community such as yourself.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Again, any questions or comments from council? All right. Well, Mr. Plavik, we sincerely appreciate you participating in this. We'll be completing our evaluations and someone will be contacting you. Again, thank you.
My pleasure. And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
You all have a great day.
You too. Bye-bye.
Right. Bye-bye.
All right. We will complete our evaluations then and reconvene at 2:00 PM. Thank you. I'll call the meeting back to order, and we are on to item B of our first agenda item. Mr. Bolt?
Yes, sir. Just seeking direction and where you'd like to go next. If you'd like me to gather up the scores and come up with the composite scores, we've similarly done, present those at another meeting. I can do that. I just want to confirm that that's the plan of action.
All right. Any comments, suggestions, recommendations?
Councilman Folder?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I want to thank all the candidates that were interviewed today. I know interviewing's not always a very comfortable thing, and I think they all did very well. But yeah, I think that we should kind of follow the same that we've been doing before, where we add up our scores and bring it back to the next council meeting.
Anyone else? Again, we have been doing this process now, and I think that's a good idea. I also want to thank all the candidates. Again, this, you know, interviewing for a position is always a bit stressful for everyone. I also think they all did well with that. And do we need a motion then?
Yes.
Yes. I guess one question is, as to when we look at these evaluations. Our next regularly scheduled council meeting is next Tuesday, the 25th. I don't believe we have sufficient time to get things agendized and have everything ready for that meeting. So we would need to look for either another special council meeting or to look at our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Yes, sir.
My preference would be to continue as we've been doing and hold another special meeting.
Very good. I'll ask the city clerk to query the council for availability.
All right. Anyone have different thoughts on that?
Not necessarily different thoughts. I just wanted to say that, you know, I think we had held with some of these special meetings, and especially with this one, where we are essentially reviewing and deciding next steps, I don't think it should be too much of our time. I think it should be a good process. And I think it's the right way to go.
All right. Anyone else? All right. I'll move then that the compilation of the evaluations be done and presented at a special meeting to be determined. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Regarding this item then, any other issues that are necessary?
No, sir.
All right. And Mr. Mays, are we going to need to stop and wait for our next item?
No, Mayor. I think we can continue on. We're just going to switch a couple of peoples in chairs.
Okay.
Please proceed.
We'll wait for the chair switching to occur here. with the firm of Fisher Phillips. And we will begin then with item number two for possible action, matters pertaining to the city manager position. Mr. Bolt?
Yes, sir. On item number two, we're seeking city council discussion regarding the May 12th interviews with the city managers and in further direction on the next steps regarding the city manager selection.
All right. We do have the evaluations that were completed in our packet. We're in a bit of a situation there, I guess, with how the scoring came out. Mr. Bolt, did you want to explain that or?
Perhaps. I'm not sure if Sarah was on the phone. I guess not quite yet. Well, I'd say the scoring was extremely close with 3,000 possibles and a 20-point differential. There was one candidate, or one raider marked them both evenly. There we go. Maybe Sarah can give us a better analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah, this is Bryce.
Yeah?
And the mayor was asking about the scoring composition and any analysis you might have on that, or any issues you might have.
I'm sorry. Could you say that again?
The mayor had just inquired about the scoring composition and your thoughts or analysis of that, and any issues with that, or your thoughts on the overall composition of scores for the city manager recruitment?
I didn't find any issues with it. I had gone through there and tallied them just like we had before. I did make a note of how they kind of were together with some of the council members and just made a note about that. I think that was provided to you as well.
Yes. I guess what I was referring to is, one, it is very close. These are both, I believe, qualified candidates. In one aspect, there's one candidate that obtained more points. However, the other candidate had more members of the council rating them highest.
Correct. And that's why I wanted to point that out. And obviously, that's still your decision to make as to which candidate you would like to make an offer to.
All right. And so that, I believe, is the point we're at. Anyone have comments that they would like to make? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I guess I'd just start by saying that both candidates were incredibly well-qualified for the manager position. And I do think their community should be very proud to have someone of their caliber working for them as a public servant. So when I was trying to determine which candidate I felt was the best candidate for the position, I really tried to look at where Boulder City is currently, you know, what its immediate needs are, you know, in this moment. And I do think the candidate that's best prepared to address those issues is Taylor Tetter. I think he demonstrated knowledge of the current software programs that are being utilized by the staff, his ability to research material, ask the right questions. And I also think his background in IT has the potential to be a great boon to operations and management of City Hall. And so, you know, after a year of the difficulties brought on by the pandemic, the growing pains that we've experienced with the recent transition period, I think we need a candidate who can hit the ground running. And I do think that Mr. Tetter is best equipped to do just that.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, thank you. I have to agree. First of all, I thought either candidate would make a very good city manager. They both come with a good set of skills. I thought it was interesting when, you know, has been a city manager in a very small community, and the other being a deputy or assistant city manager in a larger community. However, I think the thing that impressed me the most with Mr. Tetter is, was the fact that he had done his homework. I mean, he came into the interviews absolutely prepared with the knowledge necessary to walk in and start working. He had watched the council meetings. He was familiar with the historic district. He answered questions based on research that he had done. And I thought that was very important, because sometimes it's not about having all the answers, but it's knowing where to go to get them. And that he came prepared to show that. So I know it was a very close scoring situation, but he was, Taylor Tetter was definitely my first choice.
Thank you. Anyone else? You know, again, I do believe that both of these gentlemen are qualified, and not just qualified, but would be a good fit for Boulder City. Not every person who has a background as a city manager or in that field would necessarily be a good fit for Boulder City. But that's what stood out to me about both of these candidates, is that I think they are both good people for Boulder City. I also lean towards Mr. Tetter. I value the work that Mr. Herring had done in a small community to try and get as many resources together as possible for that. But I do think that Mr. Tetter also has a more well-rounded background that would benefit us where we're at right now with our city government. Anyone else? Well, again, I think we're at the point then where we need to make a recommendation. I will certainly recommend Mr. Tetter for the position. Anyone who has a different thought? All right. Well, with that, I will make a motion then to identify Mr. Tetter as the candidate that we would like to extend an offer to.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Very good. Then, sir, I'll ask Sarah to extend a conditional job offer based on our taking a physical examination and, of course, the negotiation of the employment contract.
All right. Thank you. All right. We'll move then to item number three now for possible action, the employment agreement between the city and Ms. Walker as city attorney.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Brittany Walker, your acting city attorney. I want to let you know I do have a pecuniary and personal interest in this item. I will not be your legal counsel during this item. It's my understanding Mr. Jeff Winchester is here from Fisher Phillips to provide any legal advice that you would need. I am here in my personal capacity as the candidate for city attorney.
Thank you. Ms. McKee, did you have anything that you would like to speak to on this?
Not at this point. I think, you know, the council members have invited the notes from, because the labor attorney, they've been provided comments from Ms. Walker. And at this point, I think it's, it'd be good to have a resolution to the issues that are different.
All right. We have received the contract or draft of the contract that has both areas where Ms. Walker feels there are changes needed, as well as responses from the firm of Fisher Phillips. I still have some questions on them. Mr. Winchester, did you want to go through the contract or?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. And I wanted to say a few words before we get started. One, it's been a real pleasure working with Ms. Walker in this process. She's been very, very professional. And the document you have before you shows you the original proposed contract with, as the mayor said, some proposed changes by my firm. The majority of those changes were negotiated during this process with Ms. Walker. And then you'll see Ms. Walker's proposed changes. I believe they're in purple, if you've printed out the documents in color. But we're happy to make sure that you understand which of these proposed changes is from the firm and which proposed changes are from Ms. Walker. So I think that that's the best way to proceed, is to go through section by section. And if it's appropriate, open it up to discussions, questions. I can certainly give an overview of things that have been changed from the very first iteration to now. And if you'd like, I can go ahead and get started with that.
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. Okay.
Well, let me ask before you start. Do any of the other councilmembers have a question? Councilmember Adams?
I have one clarifying question. You had mentioned it being in purple. I think on here, I'm seeing a red. Is that...
I found, yes, I found that, for whatever reason, the red line system shows up differently on different computers.
On the drop before you today, councilmembers, the changes proposed by Fisher Phillips are green, and mine are red.
Okay, I just wanted, that's what I assumed. I just wanted to make sure we are on the same page.
Thank you for that clarification. For whatever reason, on my screen, they're blue and purple. So, thank you for that. Appreciate that.
Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I just have a couple of clerical errors that we might want to cut before we get into the sections.
Sure.
Under section 10, you have two Bs. One should be a C. It should be AC.
Let me get that.
And under section 11, it should be HIJKL.
Yes, thank you. A-G-H-I-J-K. Yes, thank you, councilwoman. You had pointed those out to me, and those are now fixed in the document that I'm working from. It's my understanding that this document I'm working from, which is the document provided by Ms. Walker this morning, will ultimately become the document that will be finalized today.
That's all I can find. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that. Appreciate that.
Anyone else have questions before we get started with Mr. Winchester's review? All right, if you'd like to go ahead then, sir?
Yes, absolutely. So let's start with the introduction and recital. The third paragraph in that section, that unnumbered section, has originally had a clause that said, and I'm quoting now, "In the event the employee is excused, she is to provide at her own expense substitute counsel for such meeting." And as Ms. Walker and I discussed, that provision exists in the city charter currently. And so, to the extent that the city wishes to enforce that, it's in the charter, and it certainly can enforce that. We felt that it does not necessarily need to be in this agreement, because it's already in the charter. And frankly, we didn't want anything in here that could, at some point, be challenged as enforceable versus unenforceable. So we felt that the fact that it's in the city charter is sufficient for this purpose. And Ms. Walker, did you want to add to that?
Just my attorney had advised me that it's possible that that provision of the charter is not enforceable under the ADA and FMLA.
And then that's certainly a potential issue, that if Ms. Walker were to miss a meeting due to an FMLA qualifying reason, or an ADA qualifying reason, that this provision in a contract might not be enforceable. I'm not opining as to the city charter. That's outside of my role today. But we were, we recommend striking that and then discussing, possibly enforcing that through the city charter.
I do have a question about that. This has been an issue previously. Part of that requirement within the charter is that permission be obtained or notice be given prior to any absence from a meeting. And again, my reading of the charter is that it is specific to council meetings. It's not specific to other duties that the city attorney may have. In the past, there has been no notice of absences. I think that's an issue. I also think that it's an issue as to what counsel may be asked to substitute. That should be something that is part of the decision as to whether the absence should be excused or not. If it is not in the contract, and if it is being disputed now as being unenforceable, I think that's an issue for myself, certainly. I also think that when we begin to talk about things like ADA and FMLA, that's not what the provision of the charter is all about. If things like ADA and FMLA were to be an issue, that would mean that another section of the charter, I believe, would be called in where a substitute counsel would be requested by the city attorney where they may be unavailable or unable to perform their duties. So I think these are totally different requirements. If we have a dispute right now, then we're going to have a dispute later. And I would rather get it sorted out now rather than having to confront it later. Any other thoughts on this particular phrase in the charter?
May I just say that the contract does...
Let's hear if there are other councilmembers that have, may have thoughts on that. Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
You know, I guess I'll just, I'll just say that I have comfort in the fact that it is in the charter, and it being in the charter, I think, is fine. If there are issues, obviously, they'll have to, they'll have to be addressed. So I guess if we want to try and figure that out right now, that's fine, but I don't think it's necessary, being that it is in the charter.
However, the language in the charter is being disputed at this point. And rather than getting somewhere down the road, I don't think this is the type of thing we can just skip over at this point. Anyone else? Councilmember Folden?
I just agree. This has come up before where it wasn't really an excuse, but excused absences weren't happening, and council wasn't made aware. So, you know, there is, I think, some ironing out that we need to do to address missing of city council meetings.
The contract already requires me to provide notice and get any absences approved.
I think this is still, though, a separate charter requirement.
The charter is controlling, no matter whether that provision is in this contract or not.
Well, I understand, but you're saying that you don't believe it's valid.
I'm saying that, echoing what Jeff said, if there is an ADA or FMLA reason that I am not at a meeting and I'm excused from a meeting, that I would not be required to pay for my own replacement.
Well, once again, I think we're confusing sections of the charter, because there are two different sections that apply. One is specific to council meetings, being able to attend those meetings. There is another section regarding the city attorney's ability to perform their duties and providing for other counsel to be retained with the approval of the council.
And again, I would say that the charter controls no matter what.
But you're disputing that, is what I'm getting at.
I mean, I'm talking about my contract. I don't want to separately agree to provide at my own expense counsel under my contract. Whatever the charter says is completely something different that can be explored later, and when that applies and when it doesn't. We're talking about my contract today, and I'm not going to agree to put that in my contract.
And, okay, that's your position? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I don't, it seems redundant to me that if it's in the charter, which it appears to be, item, section 15, item 3E, it's exactly the same line. So I, and it talks about attending council meetings, and it's specific in the charter in terms of the rules. Attend all meetings unless previously excused. Therefore, the mayor pro tem in the absence of the mayor. In the event excused, or she is to provide at his or her own expense substitute counsel for such meeting. This is just a short version of that sentence. I don't think it needs to be in there.
Once again, I believe there is a dispute as to whether the charter provision is applicable or not. I believe it is. I believe there is a different section of the charter that applies to reasons why the city attorney may not be available due to either health conditions or something else. Mr. Winchester?
Yeah, once again, the debate about the charter and the, whether it is enforceable or not, is outside the scope of what I've been brought upon to, brought into to opine as to. So I would respectfully step back from that particular discussion. But my opinion is, as from a contractual view, as Ms. Walker said, her contract would require her to attend, and if she is not able to attend, to get, to be excused by three members, or by the mayor, or by the mayor pro tem in absence of the mayor. And if she were to fail to do that, then that would be a breach of the contract that the city could then use to, well, to discipline or potentially terminate the contract. As far as the sentence, if she were to fail to provide at her expense a substitute counsel by not having it here, that would no longer be a basis for a breach of contract claim by the city. But again, it still would be a separate issue that the city would have to decide whether it would, first off, enforce that, and secondly, whether it would continue to have that in its city charter, which, again, is outside of the scope of my representation in this case.
Thank you. And again, though, I believe that what you have said is the issue that I believe needs to be addressed. The city attorney, the candidate for the city attorney position, has already made clear that she does not feel this provision of the charter is valid. I believe that there are two different sections of the charter. One applying to any type of health-related reason that they may not be able to perform their duties, and the other here regarding specifically council meetings. And since we already have a dispute to say, well, we'll just wait and see what happens later on, again, that just makes no sense to me whatsoever.
I apologize if I misspoke, Mayor. My position, Mayor and councilmembers, is that this is not enforceable in my contract, and I do not want this language in my contract. Whether it is enforceable under the charter, and to what extent that that applies, and when that applies, is a separate question, and...
Okay, in your position as acting city attorney, there's been at least two occasions where you were unable to attend council meetings? Where you had a substitute counsel, or, excuse me, a substitute attorney?
One full meeting, and then I had somebody cover for part of it when I was being considered, all of which had to do with the interview process, and then today. So I guess that would be three.
Okay. And during those two occasions, did you comply with the charter provision that's written?
I think that a separate legal opinion needs to be done about that, when that, when that applies and when it doesn't. So I respectfully, Mayor, it's not something I would ever agree to in my contract.
So you believe that charter provisions can simply be interpreted and not honored?
There are several of our ordinances and things that are not enforceable. They are simply unconstitutional. The charter was written in 1958. Since 1958, there have been several major employment laws passed, the ADA, the FMLA, things like that. Federal law, in certain circumstances, preempts other laws, state laws, things like that. So specific detailed research has to be done on when things are enforceable and when they're not. My attorney has indicated to me, depending on when those, that that provision is used, it's not, it couldn't, it could possibly be not enforceable. But it's a separate, it's a separate item that has to really be analyzed. Because it applies to me, it's not even appropriate for me to be analyzing whether it applies.
Well, you're the one asking to have it removed.
From my contract?
Yes.
Which I can agree to or not agree to. The charter, I can't not agree to or agree to it. The charter is simply the law.
Well, and I guess that's my point, so...
So I'm saying I do not want to separately agree to it in my contract. I do not want to be held in breach of contract.
Right, and in your position as acting city attorney, you have not abided by the provision in the charter.
I have given Gary a gift card, so...
Well, I mean, as far as obtaining, providing notification that you would have a substitute.
I told the mayor and councilmembers I would have a substitute available.
Yeah, I don't recall that. Anyone else have...
I called you, and I told you that Mr. Booker would be there in my place. And then for this, the city had Fisher Phillips available. So, in both circumstances, I called you and I said, and I told multiple councilmembers, if not all of you, that Mr. Booker would be there in my place, and I took the day off. I didn't even, when I interviewed, I didn't even, and you actually approved the day off. I have an email from you approving the day off. So I absolutely did provide notice.
Anyone else have comment that they would like to make? Councilmember Adams?
I'll just add that I feel that I've always been properly informed by Ms. Walker as to when she was not going to be present and when substitute counsel would be available.
Anyone else? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I also feel that I've always been, I was given proper notice of having another attorney in her place. And I understand the reason for removing this from the contract, because it holds her to a standard that is, could be identified differently or not hold up under the charter because of federal law that might supersede it. So, but I don't feel that we should be addressing any kind of infractions at this point, because I don't feel any have been committed. I think we're dealing with whether or not this sentence should be in her contract, and if it's the recommendation that it should not be, because it's already addressed, and the way it's addressed could have outside influence, outside influence from federal law or things that have happened since 1956. So that's, I said, I think we're, I felt like we're addressing one sentence, and that sentence should not be in there.
Anyone else? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I would also agree that you have advised us ahead of time. I've known whenever there's going to be a substitute. I thank you for that. I definitely can see your point, because the charter is old, and the charter does need to be, have some refreshing done to it. So I understand your reasoning.
Anyone else? Mr. Winchester?
I did want to point out that in section 11, where the definition of cause to terminate the, terminate the employment of the city attorney, it contains a subsection B, no, I apologize, subsection D, that currently reads employees' failure, refusal to comply with violation or breach of the charter, Boulder City Code, et cetera, et cetera. So if there were, if this sentence were removed, and there were a concern that Ms. Walker was in violation of the charter by not providing substitute counsel, the city could look at section 11D and, and proceed to terminate employment for cause, in my opinion.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Winchester. Unfortunately, I think we're in a position where we've just had opinions offered of unenforceability of charter provisions by members of council, based on, I don't feel adequate information, but that's been stated, and I believe that creates a further problem as we look at a section like this. Anyone else? Councilmember Folden?
Thank you, Mayor. Without legal counsel to determine, or it would probably have to go to court, I would think, to determine the validity of the charter provision to provide... to determine the validity, validity of the charter provision to provide at their own expense a substitute. And to move on with this, I think that there's other provisions in here that we didn't have previously. We had this issue come forth previously. I think there's other sections in here that just discuss about how excuse is, is done and how it's approved. And with FMLA and other things that would kick into another section of our charter that would provide the city to provide an extra or a second special counsel for, during those times. I think that will protect us until we can have a real ruling or decision made on what the charter provides.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Winchester?
I think one more thought on, on, on that is if, in, in my opinion, the, the potential issue from an FMLA slash ADA standpoint is not necessarily the requirement that the city attorney secure substitute counsel. It's the pay the substitute counsel out of their own pocket. And so perhaps a compromise today could be to re, to, to retain the language that says that the city attorney will secure substitute counsel. That, that would be one of the requirements of missing a meeting. And perhaps omit the language about paying for it herself or paying for substitute counsel herself. But leaving that obviously in the charter and, and that could be then discussed at a separate meeting after. And I, I appreciate what you said, Councilwoman Foldon, that I think having a separate legal opinion on whether that could be problematic moving forward. That particular provision in the charter could be problematic moving forward, could then be separately addressed. As, I would suggest that potentially as a compromise.
Anyone wishing to respond to that? Councilmember Adams?
I'd just say that I think it's important to note that the, our, our counsel here and advice, you know, does believe it is important to remove the, the, the portion in which it is, at least in this contract, the responsibility of Ms. Walker to, to pay for the, the expenses for the substitute. So I think it's important regardless that, that we acknowledge that.
Anyone else? Councilmember Bridges?
I'm, I think that is the, the item under discussion is the provision at her own expense. And if that was removed and simply say, in the event the employee is excused, she is to provide substitute counsel for such meeting. Because there may be a discussion at some point as to whether or not the provisions of federal law might require the city to pay for an attorney, for the substitute for that purpose.
I would be fine with that, although I would, instead of the word provide, I would simply like to say coordinate substitute counsel. In addition, there is an NRS 608 provision that expressly prohibits an employer from requiring an employee to provide a replacement at their own expense. NRS 608 does not apply to, apply to public employers pursuant to a Department of Labor opinion, but I do want to point that out.
Anyone else?
And if I could add, we could even say, following up on Councilwoman Bridges' point, we could, we could say, you know, she is to arrange or coordinate substitute counsel for such meeting pursuant to the city charter or something like that. Where, so we could incorporate at least the, the city charter into that sentence without calling out the, the pay for it at her expense would be a com- potential compromise.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, would you agree to that?
Yes, I would agree to that.
I suggest we go that route.
Anyone else?
I'd, I'd agree to that.
That's acceptable to me as well.
Please, please give you a moment. I'll, I'm, I'm going to be sort of the scribe. So hang on a second. She is to arrange. Was a vote needed on that or is that sufficient for me to go ahead and make the change?
I believe we can go through this. And if we are in agreement, we can then simply make one motion on the entirety of it.
Okay, I've made the change.
Thank you. Shall we move then to section one?
Yes, I wanted, I did want to point out one more thing. The, there was a small change to the final section of the same paragraph we were just looking at. This makes it very clear that the, the employment may be terminated by either the city council. I'm sorry. And I need to wordsmith this. May be terminated by the city council with or without cause, and we will talk about cause here in a few minutes, or by employee as set up below. So when it comes to the employee, and as, as all of you know, that we've been negotiating about whether the employee should have her own cause to terminate, which would trigger certain severance payments. But we have negotiated to the point where the city has the unilateral authority to terminate without cause, which then triggers the severance provision along with some Cobra benefits. Or, or with cause, which then would mean that the city would pay out nothing to her. And the employee on her end has the right to terminate her employment. And her employment would simply, would simply end. Although we're going to get to in a few minutes, the issue of paying out of accrued unused time off. So I just wanted to frame that for the council.
Anyone have questions regarding that change? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, sir. I think you said may be terminated by either, and then you dropped either.
Correct, I just removed either.
So you just removed either?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you for pointing that, thank you. Okay, so the next issue to discuss is section one, I'm sorry, section three, part two. We have no, there's no controversy with regard to section one. Her, her employment is at will. Section two is as it was originally drafted, her duties. Section three, part one, her base salary. I, I understand is, there's no debate about that. It's $125,000 per year. Then as far as pay raises, the, the compromise we had reached and Ms. Walker had asked for certain other provisions that would have connected her annual pay raises to sort of automatic lockstep increases that other department heads get. And we have, the compromise we've reached that we are recommending is in section three, part two, the annual performance and evaluation of salary adjustments. Initially, the, the zone of potential merit increase would have been between zero, which still exists. And 5% as a compromise, we suggest increasing the 5% to 6%. So that is the change that we're recommending after our negotiations, that she could have a possible merit increase up to the maximum of 6% of her base salary.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that change? Nope. Thank yous.
Great. Okay. The next change recommended by us, again, after, after negotiations is section 5.2, vacation. And I'm not sure why this is highlighted because I think initially the, the agreement said that the moment you become an employee under this agreement, that you immediately begin to accrue additional vacation time. I think that was already in there. I'm not sure why it's showing up as a change because my understanding was always from, from day one, Ms. Walker will commence accruing vacation time pursuant to the, the normal vacation time accrual schedule of the city for department heads. We recommend an increase of a, her one time, so let me back up a little bit. The agreement was originally drafted to give her five days vacation after negotiation. And it's a one-time, it's a one-time allotment. It does not occur again. It just, when she starts her, her, as, you know, day one, she will have five days under the original added to her vacation bank. We recommend increasing that to 12 for reasons that I will ask Ms. Walker to, to address. But again, it's after negotiations and after her agreement to forego a number of other things that she was initially asking for. We think it's, it's reasonable. And just to make sure the council members are aware, this agreement has always anticipated that she will roll over whatever sick leave and vacation time she has accrued in her position as interim city attorney. We think it's, we think it's fair. We think it's a, a good compromise. And with that, I'll turn it over to, to Brittany for any, any comments you to make on that.
I have no further comments.
Okay. But again, we think that's a, it's a fair compromise in this situation.
Questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I have just a grammatical question.
Okay.
Where you say shall be provided with, should that hyphen be a one-time allotment?
Very, thank you very much. That is absolutely true.
Thank you.
And no hyphen, a one hyphen time allotment. Thank you, yes.
Councilmember Adams?
I think 12 days is appropriate.
Anyone else? All right.
Okay. There is one thing that is showing up in that same, very same paragraph that I think also is, was in the original and may have gotten taken out and put back in. And that is when Ms. Walker is requesting vacation time in excess of two days, that she is to seek approval and receive approval from the mayor or mayor pro tem in the mayor's absence. And that, subject to the needs of the city, such requests shall not unreasonably be denied. I believe that actually is the original language in the, in the first draft. And again, I think it got taken out and put back in. Okay. Was there any, any, any further discussion on that section before I move on?
Any questions regarding that change?
Okay. All right, next we're moving to section eight, general business expenses. The overview here, and I, I believe it's adequately reflected in the language. The overview is that for, for Ms. Walker's dues and subscriptions, which means like her, her bar dues and, and subscriptions that she needs to, for her licensure and her continuing legal education, that she will provide an itemized list of expenses to council that council will look at them and debate them and ultimately either approve or disapprove or alter them as necessary as part of the budget process. And that goes for section eight one and section eight two. Section eight two being any travel that she needs to engage in for the good of the city. You know, including examples of, you know, you know, city council conventions or meetings where city attorneys, I'm sorry, city attorney meetings where she would get together with other city attorneys and, you know, exchange ideas and best practices. And once again, before going to any of those, that she would itemize those anticipated expenses to council. And before we open it up to any further discussion, I wanted to point out section three of section eight, or sub-three of section eight, where Ms. Walker will be required to submit all required receipts and documentation to support the expenses and that the city manager shall report the month following those expenses so that the city, that the council can keep track of what's being spent by Ms. Walker and what it's being spent on.
Questions or comments regarding these changes? I do have a concern with the wording, especially in subsection two there. You know, as it reads out, the city shall include in its approved budget cost to pay, and then it lists out those different things. I'm not comfortable with that wording because it seems to indicate that anything that is proposed by the city attorney would be included in the budget and not subject to the approval process by council.
That, that's a fair drafting comment. I, I'm happy to, to take suggestions, to, to change it, to make it more.
Are, are you sure you want me to, to suggest a change?
Let me suggest. How about this?
Something along the lines of shall consider or shall, shall review and approve. Well, I shouldn't say.
Review and approve.
Shall consider for approval.
Yes. I like that language. Shall, shall consider, consider for approval during, how about during the budget process? Proposed budget costs, or no, proposed costs to pay for. So let me read it again, the, the way I'm rewriting it. So the title still reads, payment of expenses for travel and substance. The city shall consider for approval during the budget process, proposed costs to pay for professional and official travel, meetings, et cetera, et cetera.
That's, I'm agreeable with that. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Walker?
That's fine.
Okay.
Mayor, so that would cover if there was a budgetary issue that year where we didn't have money for those kind of things.
Right now, it's just my bar license and Westlaw. I do think those things are necessary for me to do my job.
Right.
I think we have.
I'm going to talk about the travel and expenses. So like.
Yeah, there's two separate sections.
For instance, what happened with our budget cycle with COVID, we were really on share. So a lot of the travel expenses were cut. So this language is more flexible if there was not money in the budget for those type of things. That we could be flexible about it.
I, I think that's a very good change. Thank you, Mayor, for pointing that up.
Anyone else?
Mayor, may I make a request?
Yes.
I would at least like as minimum to have it cover my license fee and my legal research tools.
We have two separate sections. There's section one referring to your dues and subscription.
Oh, so we're on section two?
Yes.
Oh, I apologize, Mayor. I apologize.
The, the travel, yeah. And the way I read section, I'm sorry to just jump in, I apologize. The, the way I read section one is that this, it reads, the, the city shall include in its approved budget the cost to pay for professional dues and subscriptions of the employee reasonably necessary for licensure and continuing legal education. So I think to the mayor's point, section one says shall. Section two says shall consider for the travel.
Understood. I get my apologies for misunderstanding.
Anyone else on, on section two? All right.
Okay. Section nine simply states. Okay. Section 9 simply states that the position is an at-will position, which means that, as I mentioned earlier, the position, or sorry, the employee can be terminated by the city at any time for cause or no cause. And we will get to cause here in a minute, but this just reiterates that is, this is an at-will employment situation.
Any questions or comments on Section 9?
9.
Okay, all right.
Section 10, this deals with severance. Severance would occur in the case where the city were to terminate the city attorney without cause. And we recommend, and sorry, the severance amount is measured in terms of months. The initial severance package from day one is set at three months with additional months to accrue yearly thereafter, sort of to reward, to reward the person for continued service, to a maximum of six months. Severance, under this agreement, severance will never exceed six months absent some separate negotiated agreement between the city attorney and the city. This proposed change, and we recommend agreeing to it, recognizes Ms. Walker's service to the city already. And so what it means is that her start date, for purposes of accruing severance, will be her start date in her current position, which means that as of October 21, 2021, she will accrue a fourth month of severance in the event she were to be terminated without cause. It's very simply, very simply that, and we think that that is a reasonable position to take, especially because the city is also taking the position that her benefits, I'm sorry, I apologize, her paid leave is also running, will roll over, and it goes back to her first day in her current position. So let me stop there and see if there are any questions.
Questions or comments? No, we seem to be fine with that.
Okay, great.
Mayor, I do have one question.
Sure.
So those are blank on some of the annual performance evaluation and the term and the other sections to be filled in. Would that apply the October date then apply to all sections? Is that what was agreed upon, or?
Ms. Walker, can you help me there? I'm not sure what sections are being referred to.
So Section 1 term is blank right now, and then Section 3.
Oh, those will just be filled in. Those are things that.
Right, but does that reflect back to October?
No, so the term, so for this agreement, this agreement starts whatever day that the city approves her hiring under this agreement. What we're talking here is for purposes of severance and for her paid leave, she's being given credit back to her first day back in 2020.
Okay.
Is that accurate? Ms. Walker?
Yes, and so the effective, like the agreement start date says effective date. So the term is effective date, and then the term start date is defined as my start date as acting.
Okay. So for like the annual performance, because that's still also blank, that would be the date of approving this. I'm just trying to follow, make sure which timelines are which we're using.
That would be filled in.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we're jumping around a bit. I just want to be sure.
So Section 3, number 2, had the annual performance.
Yes.
Date was still blank on that. So I was just seeing if that was being tied to the October date or now.
My understanding on that one, the annual performance, and this is, this is the interim evaluation, this is the six-month interim, would happen six months from the date she, so this agreement is executed.
Okay.
So it would not have anything to do with her start date. It would be the execution date. And I can include execution date, that's the term we're using, right? Effective date, sorry, effective date. I can include effective date for that interim performance evaluation, just to make sure it's very clear, very clear.
Yeah, because six months from my start date is already passed.
Right, that's what I was asking. Why would that, where would we fall? And then the March date would probably not really apply either. That was kind of stated in there.
November. Okay. Are we back on, back on track? Okay.
I think so.
You bet. To the expenses, severance, right now we are at Section 10 severance. We discussed And as I mentioned earlier, this, this Section 2A simply refers to the accrual of severance. And what it does is it takes into account the start date, not the effective date. And as I mentioned earlier, if this proposal is accepted, and we do recommend accepting it, it simply sort of accelerates the accrual of severance. But once again, this agreement has always been and has not been changed to max severance at six months. So with that, I'll stop and see if there are any questions or discussion.
No, we seem to be fine with that.
Okay, great. The next subsection B, the original document allows for and continues, well, provides for a termination without cause. Certain COBRA coverage, that would be, so the package upon severance without cause would be the severance pay. And by the way, this agreement allows the city to either pay severance pay in monthly installments or all in one lump sum. It also requires, and again, there's nothing controversial here, nothing has really been altered. I just want to make sure that the city council understands that COBRA coverage will be for the same amount of time as the severance unless the city attorney obtains new employment and becomes covered under the new employer's healthcare plan. Any questions or discussion on that one?
I just had one.
Yeah.
On this one, I just wanted to know if we need to reiterate that this was, what type of, that this would also be termination without cause. I'm just wondering, because A and what C would be, kind of spell that out a little bit more, but this one didn't. I don't know if that's just repetitive or if it needs to be there or not.
If there are any.
I'm sorry, where?
My opinion would be short. We could add, I'm sorry to interrupt, that we would just add that first clause that's in 2A.
So Section 10, 2B, when it talks about COBRA, it doesn't talk about specifically when that's provided, although it is under the subsection that would be without cause. Just to clarify, that's without cause.
Yes, the, I mean, I.
But you have to prove it too.
Jeff should have pointed.
Do you have to prove on your end?
So you want to put, because the COBRA coverage, it says for a period equal to inconsistency with the severance period. I wouldn't even be eligible for the severance period unless I was terminated without cause.
Right.
So.
So it would be repetitive here, right? But I was just wondering if we just start out that, similar to how A is started out, if employee is intermed without cause, and then just go on to the paragraph. I mean, it is repetitive, of course it is, but just clarifying language for us, laymen who aren't attorneys.
Sure. Yeah. And then you'd say for an employee's employment is terminated without cause, comma, for a period equal to, right? Is that how we, okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Okay. Section 11, I apologize.
I do have a question on subsection D. The last sentence, "The release and waiver shall be in a form approved by special counsel for the city and agreed to by employee." You know, the problem I see with that wording is that that could potentially lead to an impasse.
I would just say in the event of an impasse, I can not get severance.
Well, again, and that's, I don't want to get to an impasse. So the requirement would be that the waiver would be either accepted or not accepted. If it's not accepted, then the severance would not be payable.
Sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to at least have input because I don't want the terms to just be handed to me, take it or leave it. I think that I should have an opportunity.
But that's where I believe we run into the problem with a potential impasse.
There's an impasse I can just not agree, and I wouldn't get severance.
Well, that would be what would happen if a waiver were presented to you that you did not agree with.
Right, I wouldn't get severance, and then I would go my own way, and I would not sign this waiver and release.
Which is why I don't believe having the employee agree to it. Mr. Winchester, I'll.
It's a fair point, Mayor, that, you know, I think the scenario you portray is a possible one. I also hear Ms. Walker, who would like some input into the severance agreement. One legal concept that we should keep in mind is the contract of adhesion. I am always a fan of negotiating any contract like the one we're negotiating now, so that down the road, if there's any attack on the contract, contracts enforceability under the concept of contracted of adhesion, you've got the negotiations to fall back on and say, well, no, it was a negotiated contract, so it can't possibly be a contract of adhesion. But I also hear the mayor's point where this could, you know, the employee could certainly say, well, I'm not agreeing to the special counsel's draft, draft contract, and so exactly, now we're at impasse. So if there's some language that would be proposed that would make it clear that the employee would not receive severance if impasse is reached, I think that would be acceptable. I also know in the real world that if a, and these severance agreements, they're fairly standard. There's almost never anything that is objectionable or unusual about them. But we would want the employee to have some input. So however we could draft that so that at the end of the day, if the employee has input and rejects the contract, the severance agreement, then she doesn't get severance. So I'm certainly willing to consider some language to that effect.
Let's just take out what I added. It's fine.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Foldon?
Mayor, yeah, before we move on, I wanted to go back up to see, there's some terms in here that I didn't quite understand in this section. So the second part, any salary and benefits paid to employee during a suspension or administrative leave that commenced after adoption of the city council's resolution to terminate would be deducted from the severance pay. I just don't understand how there would be anything given after a resolution to terminate employee. I don't know if that's supposed to read before adoption of the city council's resolution to terminate instead of after. So for me, the scenario would be if someone was suspended or put on administrative leave, what they're trying to say is that anything occurred during that time would be deducted from severance pay. But this word is reading that happens after termination would happen. So I'm just.
So I read it certainly, you know, open to some word spitting to make it clear. The way I read it is that in the situation where the city is terminating employment without cause, and the city has made the determination to terminate without cause, because that is the only situation where severance is, comes into play. If the city makes that determination to terminate without cause, and then for whatever reason puts the city attorney on some kind of a paid leave or administrative leave, then that paid leave would come out of her severance, is the way I read it. And it would only come into play, again, where the determiner's been made to terminate without cause, and that for whatever reason she's placed on some kind of paid leave pending. So for example, if the city said, we've decided to terminate, and her termination will be effective June 1, which means there would still be a few weeks between the resolution to terminate and the effective date of the termination, her severance pay would start running the moment that the city made the determination to terminate. I hope that makes sense.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. This next section, Section 11, I will, I'll set the stage, and of course, Ms. Walker, please, please address the issues that I'm going to raise here. This cause definition is a definition that our firm uses regularly in its employment agreements. It does, to anticipate Ms. Walker's opposition, it does give the employer a lot of leeway to determine whether cause exists to terminate the employee and then deny her severance pay as well as the COBRA pay that we discussed earlier. It does use words like failure, inability to perform. It does use words like disclosure. It does use words like, you know, inability to secure, et cetera, et cetera. I apologize. But long story short, we designed these so that the employer has a fair amount of leeway in good faith, because every contract has incorporated within it the obligation of good faith and fair dealing to make a good faith determination that this person failed to do XYZ. Ms. Walker is going to present to you her argument why she would like to include language along the lines of gross failure or knowing and intentional failure to do XYZ. And in our opinion, that can lead to legal disputes as to whether not only was there failure, but was it a gross failure? And so that is probably the area where we're still at pretty clear odds as to what the city council should do moving forward with this agreement. With that, I'll yield to Ms. Walker.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Yes, I've added some modifiers to this language. I felt as originally written, the language is unnecessarily broad. It would encompass very minor things that could be considered for cause, and I think that for cause is a serious thing. And I think that for cause should be only reserved for serious offenses. So I've added language to indicate such. If you'd like, we can go through it subsection by subsection. In subsection B, the original language said employees' failure or inability to perform her duties within the expectations of the city as determined by the city council. Well, the city council could say anything. I mean, that is so broad. It says that they could just, you know, hold a meeting and say, you know, we don't like, you know, X, and I've never known that they didn't like it. I didn't have any, you know, and so that could be anything. And so I added modifiers to say continued gross failure as set forth in the evaluation. And that would at least give me some notice about what the expectations of council were and that I failed to meet them.
Shall we go line by line? It's probably a good idea that we go line by line. So let's stop there and see. So just to clarify, Ms. Walker has. So, so just to clarify, uh, Ms. Walker has suggested the addition of the words continued gross and has suggested crossing out determined by the city and in that place, in its place, set forth in the evaluation, which refers to the annual performance evaluation that the, um, council will do of her performance.
Uh, with regard to that, I, I understand that, you know, this is trying to define what would constitute cause. Uh, so I don't have a problem with the phrase continued gross failure unless that's a term, uh, Mr. Winchester, that, you know, has special legal meaning.
Well, it, from a legal standpoint, it, it, it would require the, the city to establish a record that whatever, uh, action or omission is at issue has continued, right? It's the, that just the layman's understanding of the word continued. It has been ongoing. Um, gross is a fairly high level. Uh, I think the easiest way to, uh, to talk about gross is, um, neg- negligence versus gross negligence, right? Gross negligence is the type of negligence that a reasonable person would know, uh, is negligent and is irresponsible. So anytime you add the word gross to something, you're making it a, 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 a higher hurdle to clear for the decision maker. So I'll, I will, I will leave it at that.
Thank you. And again, I, I don't have a concern about that since this is a definition of for cause, uh, rather than somebody simply, uh, failing to, uh, perform their duties. Uh, the last change there though, the set forth in the evaluation, um, I, I do not agree with that. Uh, it is, you know, we're talking about annual evaluations. Uh, that's not the meaning in my mind of what an at-will employee is. It's also not within the meaning of what is written in the charter that, uh, appointed officials can be appointed or removed at any time. Uh, this seems to set forward that, no, you have to wait until you get to the evaluation. Then you have to, uh, delineate the behavior, uh, and then you have to wait some further period uh, to see whether that behavior continues or not. Uh, I can certainly foresee, uh, possibilities of an employee engaging in gross, uh, continued gross failure to perform their job, um, that it, you're not going to wait a year. You're going to make a decision. So this set forth in the evaluation, I do not believe is appropriate for, uh, inclusion in this.
I concur with your evaluation.
Anyone else? Councilmember Hoskins?
Oh, yes, I tend to agree with you on that.
Councilmember Adams?
I'll just, I'll just add as, as, as a counter in that, you know, this is in discussion for, for cause. You know, there is still the ability to terminate without cause. I understand that, that sometimes that, that there is meaning and there's purpose for having that meaning, but it's not that we would not have the ability to terminate. It's just to find, it's to terminate for cause and to demonstrate that there is for cause and that it, you know, I think that in the evaluation, I mean, it could be in set forth in a evaluation. I'm assuming we can still hold evaluations at-
Well, you'll notice that it's capitalized, so apparently it's referring to something specific. And-
I understand.
the reason for the word for cause, it has substantial financial implication. So it's not just, well, we can still do this, but not that. It has serious implications regarding the financial aspects.
No, I, I, I absolutely understand that, which was my point, but I was just saying that I just wanted to make sure that, that it's not that we don't have the opportunity to, it's just that that it would limit a way in which one of the ways to terminate, so. I'm just bringing the point up.
All right.
I would be fine with deleting set forth in the valuation, um, with continued gross failure or inability to perform her duties within the expectations and I would just say of the city council.
Anyone else? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I would, um, I, I would agree to expectations of the city council, within the expectations of the city council because it might be in a period of time where there hasn't been, if there's an annual evaluation and six months later there is what appears to be gross failure, continued gross failure. Um, and I think there are expectations of the city council. And so I, I would consider within the expectations of the city council.
Anyone else? All right, so, uh, Mr. Winchester looks as though the agreement then is, retain the phrase continued gross and remove the last phrase there and return it to the original wording.
Uh, and also changing it to expectations of the city council, removing the city from, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Uh, as we move, is, may we move on to C, sub C?
Yes.
As we move on to sub C, uh, the, the original, uh, document, uh, for cause would include employee being arrested for a felony or any other crime involving moral turpitude or dishonesty, which in the good faith opinion of the city, as determined by city council, would impair her ability to perform her duties. Um, during negotiations, uh, we suggested that the city change the word arrest to charged with. Uh, as we know, arrests can happen, mistaken arrests can happen all the time, uh, and, uh, an arrest could, could occur. Um, but if the city prosecutor, uh, or other prosecutor determined that there was not sufficient, uh, reason to, to charge the person, that, uh, it would be, it, it would be unfair to terminate someone based solely on arrest. Um, again, that's our recommendation, but I, I, obviously I would love to hear your thoughts on changing the word arrest to charged with.
Questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
No, I, I would absolutely agree with that. I think that's, that's an important distinction.
Anyone disagreeing with the change that's proposed? All right.
Okay. Next is, uh, sub D. Uh, uh, we have the word gross again, uh, and so you already know our, my stance on gross. Please, please discuss whether you would like to continue, uh, would you, whether to accept gross failure, refusal to comply with violation or breach. And, and please help me, Ms. Walker, I believe gross there modifies gross failure.
That's correct.
Uh, again, my position would be the same since this is a definition, uh, of for cause, which has, uh, can have significant financial impacts. I would be okay with, uh, retaining the word gross. Anyone feel differently? All right.
This next one is a, a, uh, I, I think a very, very important one. They all are important, but I think this one's especially important. And it comes to the, um, city attorney's disclosure of trade secrets or other confidential business information. Um, initially, the modifier was unauthorized disclosure. Um, through negotiations, um, I was, I suggested the, the word unlawful disclosure because, uh, these disclosures are governed by, uh, Nevada law. Um, Ms. Walker would like to include the modifiers, knowing and intentional unlawful disclosure of the city's trade secrets and other confidential business information.
My concern there was just NRS two thirty-nine and public records law is very broad. I, I wouldn't want to, actually, if, and I, I don't see a scenario where I would disclose any city trade secrets or confidential business information. Um, but that, that's why I put knowing and intentional just because we do have to respond quickly to public records requests and I do my best. I, I spend a lot of time reviewing them thoroughly, reviewing the case law that applies, um, weighing balancing interests, uh, that I need to balance on behalf of the city, uh, to determine whether disclosure is appropriate. Um, but we all make mistakes as we're human. So I, that's why I've added these, this additional language.
And my counterpoint to that be- before any comments is to, to me, the word unlawful, uh, covers that. Um, but, uh, that's, that's the end of my, my input on that point.
Thank you. And again, I, you know, substituting knowing and intentional, um, you know, i- it's easy for someone after an act to say, well, I didn't know. Uh, I think the unlawful is, uh, that there's going to be some intent there. So I, I, I believe just having unlawful disclosure is sufficient, not the modifying knowing and intentional. Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
I'll just say I'm, I'm not bothered by it considering that if it seems to be the opinion that unlawful includes intent, uh, then I don't see why it would be a problem to have the knowing and intentional portion in there.
Unlawful does not include intent.
So then I think it, personally, I do believe knowing and intentional should be considered maybe.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I, I agree that knowing and intentional because if unintentional disclosure is still disclosure and if it's a disclosure of something and it's unlawful, that doesn't presume that it was knowing and intentional. It would, it would just be unlawful because you're not supposed to. But if you make a decision to release something and then it's determined that that thing should not be released, it's an unlawful release, but it doesn't mean you intentionally wanted it to be put out there. So I'd be comfortable with leaving knowing and intentional, unlawful.
Councilmember Folden?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this one's a little more complicated because, um, within law, it's a little bit harder to prove knowing and intentional. Um, and I think that you would find yourself in that circumstance of proving that it was knowingly done versus on accident would be a lot harder to prove without wording added in there. And I'll just refer to our council, how that would be done in a contract, um, to prove something like that.
I'm sorry.
How would you prove something like that?
Uh, it's, it's, uh, not to, not to use fancy, um, Latin terms, but it's the mens rea, right? You have to get into the, the head of the person who did it and prove their intent or lack thereof. And so now you're doing evidentiary inquiry into, you know, did the city attorney say anything about this to anyone and you're, you're, you're going to, it, it will be a, a source of, of contention, you know, at, uh, ultimate arbitration uh, of the, the termination for cause. Uh, and so that, that's, you have to, yeah, get into the person's mind in order to prove-
I would just ask, would you want to fire me for cause for, um, unintentional lawful disclosure?
I, I think, you know, rather than posing the question that way, um, it should be posed as this is simply a possible action that the council may take if the action is deemed to be so serious as to terminate for cause. And I understand that, you know, we can go back and forth about, you know, knowing and intent and all that, but I think Mr. Winchester's point is well taken. Uh, and also the context of this is what is up to each council member to decide. So just because something was an unlawful disclosure, uh, doesn't mean that a council member can't say, well, once the situation has been explained to me, I understand that this might not be a for cause situation. Having this wording in here does not mean that it is immediately enacted or brought against the employee. It's just simply stating that those are one of the possible reasons why a for cause dismissal might be, uh, considered.
I agree with you, Mayor, a hundred percent. And all I'm saying is if you take out knowing and in, unintentional, then the council could decide to, um, a for cause termination even if the disclosure was unintentional.
That's correct.
So I'm just making that clear.
Councilmember Folden, do you have a comment?
Well, I would just say that goes back to working with, under good faith and with, um, one another and that it would have to be a really gross, unlawful. I mean, I think it would depend on what was, I understand, I hear you. I hear what you're saying that you, we wouldn't want to be fired for something accidental for sure. And I think that once goes on further in the contract, um, you know, you know, that you wouldn't, you know, we talked about that later with, you know, you wouldn't want to breach, um, the contract just because you're releasing per NRS. So-
That's true.
I, I see both sides.
I'm fine taking out knowing and intentional.
Anyone else? Councilmember Hoskins?
Uh, yes, I just have a question. It was employees unauthorized and unlawful disclosure. Is that correct?
No, pre- prior it was, uh, employees unauthorized disclosure. And then, uh, as part of compromise, we suggested, uh, getting rid of unauthorized and going with unlawful for the, for the reason that, that Ms. Walker said earlier. Authorized suggests that every time she would disclose anything, she would have to get authorization to do so. But under NRS, um, she, under the statute, there are times where the city attorney has to make the decision to disclose. And so we thought the better compromise would be to hold her to the standard of unlawful disclosure versus unauthorized.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Again, Ms. Walker has stated she's okay with removing knowing and intentional and leaving it at just unlawful. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, moving forward, we have no, uh, issue with, uh, section F. Simply clarifying fiduciary duties owed to the city. We think that's fine. Uh, section G, given, um, the council's discussion of gross, uh, I, I'm, I, I'm assuming that you would like to leave the word gross in front of misconduct and that's certainly-
Um, I had one further change. I felt that dishonesty was very broad. Um, so I, I had proposed to strike that. I just, uh, forgot to change that in this version. Um, and so I, I would propose to strike dishonesty as dishonesty is very broad. I, I think that that could be subjective.
I, I, go ahead, go ahead, Your Honor, sorry.
I, I, I certainly think that it, it's a reason for cause if someone's being dishonest. And, uh, again, that, you know, these are not automatic things. These are things to be considered should the action be taken for cause rather than not for cause. Um, so I certainly think that if a determination is made, uh, that someone's being dishonest, uh, that, that is a reason for a for cause separation. Anyone else? Councilmember Folden?
I have a question. I think there's something about ethics, um, later on. But is that an ethical, is dishonesty part of two eighty-one A? The ethics code or the meta rules of professional conduct? I'm not, I'm not-
Right, I mean, I, I know those, those, um, concepts are certainly intertwined into those, those roles, uh, especially well with an attorney. Um, you know, uh, honest communication with your client is, I know it's, I can't cite you chapter and verse. But in, in my experience as an employment attorney, this most often crops up when there's an internal investigation. And it's never, it's, I, I have never seen an employer, um, use this provision to terminate someone for cause for a trivial uh, mistruth, you know? When, when were you here? I was here Tuesday. Well, wait a minute, it says you were here Wednesday. Oh, gosh, yeah, I was, it was Wednesday, right? It comes up where someone is, is, is part of an investigation, they're providing information to the employer as part of the investigation and they frankly lie. They, they provide material information that is untrue. That is the way that I've seen employers, uh, employ the word dishonesty, um, in the employment arena. So. So, so I, I hope I answered your question because I'm looking at this word more from the standpoint of the employer, employee versus the, the professional, you know, the rules of ethics and that sort of thing. It's, it's truly, you know, we, we, we had this important issue. We came to you, we relied upon you to give us truthful information and you were dishonest.
Um, if I may, Mayor?
Yes.
Oh. I, it's just subjective. Um, that's, that's my concern. I feel like for cause should be pretty somewhat objective. Um, and I think that, uh, you could say someone was dishonest when they weren't and, and it'd be hard to prove otherwise. Um, you know, I think obviously fraud, misrepresentation, concealment, theft, embezzlement, you know, you know, those are, you know, in, in other city attorney contracts, the, the forecause is really narrowly defined as, you know, conviction of a crime, uh, embezzlement or, or material breach of the contract. And so this is just a very broad definition. Um, I think dishonest, like I said, is, is very subjective. And I think that you could almost say anything. It might not even be true. Um, but, and it would be hard for me to, to prove I wasn't being dishonest. And I just think it, it's, um, overbroad. But, uh, if, if it's, if it's, um, if it's a point of contention, I, I obviously am, am a very honest person. Um, I feel today I was, I, I was said that I was dishonest when I, when I wasn't. So that's, see, that's, that's a reason.
Well, and, and again, I, I think that when we look at this contract, when I look at this contract, uh, this isn't about a, a specific individual. It's about a contract for employment. So I, I'm not expecting you at any time to be dishonest. But I look at some of these other words in here as well. Uh, misconduct, okay? We did add the modifier there, gross misconduct. Misrepresentation, uh, you know, those are all words, I think, that is, it's up to members of city council to be able to use their judgment as to when things like that occur. But if things like that occur, I do believe that that warrants a for cause dismissal.
Right, if, if those things occur, but it, it does have to be objective. Um.
Well, I, I, I don't know that some of these things can be totally objective. And I, I also don't think that accomplishes what an at-will, uh, contract is supposed to be. And that is, uh, i- it's not up to the city council to have to prove everything that, that they may, uh, represent. Um, it's their decision as to whether they feel that these terms apply or not.
I just would propose to strike it, but it's, again, if it's, it's, if it's the council's opinion, it should be in there, then I'll, it can be in there.
Well, I, I don't see how it, it's necessarily, uh, any more nebulous than words like misrepresentation or concealment.
I was accused of being dishonest today and I wasn't.
Um, I don't believe that occurred, but you may have a different opinion on that. Anyone else? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, um, NRS, unethical or dishonest practices. Would that work instead?
Yes, I'd be comfortable with that.
Unethical or dishonest practices, uh, to take it to a level of, a higher level of dishonesty?
Mr. Winchester?
Yeah, I think my response to that, uh, Councilwoman Bridges is back to what I said earlier, that this provision of cause, um, really is, is geared towards the employer, employee relationship versus the client lawyer, uh, relationship. And so I think from a, a purely employment standard, um, and we do mention ethics, uh, later on, that, um, and I'm sorry, would, would, would we cite to the statute? Is that?
No, I, I just, i- it, the wording looked like it was more narrowly directed. Um, and this had to do with certain certifications and professional designations, but NRS 90, um, it had to do with securities. It was a separate issue, however. Um, dishonest practices.
So, oh, so the phrase would be dishonest.
Even, uh, yeah, if we're discussing ethics later, dishonest practices as opposed to dishonesty.
I would, I would be amenable to that change.
Because dishonesty like, uh, the other could be an unintentional. So dishonest practices are, uh, sound like they have more, um, a, a consistent behavior.
And that's a great point. So then the, the, um, the council would have to prove that this was sort of an adopted practice that was based on dishonesty. And, and I'm glad you clarified that was for, um, sort of licensing purposes. So like, I'm thinking of like a contractor who repeatedly engaged in dishonest practices with regard to his or her customers. Uh, that would bring a, a new aspect to this, um, but obviously it's, it's, it's up to the council to decide. Um, for purposes of employment, again, as I've, I've, I've mentioned, this, this term dishonesty is, uh, and, and the mayor makes a great point, the, the word right before it, misrepresentation. Um, if someone, you know, misrepresents the facts as part of an investigation, uh, or an, an, an internal inquiry, that, that too could, could serve as, as cause, as, in addition to dishonesty, which more leans towards the, um, the side of, you know, out, not lying. Um, but I'm, I'm, obviously I'm at the service of the council, so.
Councilmember Adams?
I'll add that I, I think, um, going to dishonest practices still encompasses the intent here and is something that it seems that, at least we have, uh, something that Ms. Walker is amenable to. And I think also addresses the issue of, of dishonesty. Um, it just makes it a little bit more clear. So I, I think, I think that's a, a good, uh, good compromise.
Well, I, you know, we need to be careful about compromises and, and I do appreciate what you're saying. But, um, y- you get into, well, it, was it repeated or was it a, a gross dishonesty? Um, again, i- if, if that makes the world go round that we add the word practice there, um, okay, I guess. Anyone else? Councilmember Hoskins?
I, I agree with that.
Anyone else? All right?
Okay, um, just, just for clarification, uh, we added to section H, uh, employees inability or failure to secure and or maintain employees licensed to practice law. We feel that has, I mean, that's, that's not a, uh, any contention that's an agreed upon change that we think clarifies, um, clarifies the, the situation. Originally had, it had read, uh, her required licenses by government agencies with jurisdiction over the city or employee. Here, she's an attorney and the license she needs to have is a license to practice law. So we think that that's a, a fair change.
Anyone have any disagreement with that? All right.
Okay, uh, section J, uh, no manufacturing, distributing, dispensing, transporting, possessing illegal drugs. There is no controversy over that. No cooking meth in the basement. The final change in this, uh, section that we're absolutely, well, that we would like to, uh, present, uh, to the council, uh, and that we believe is a reasonable ask, uh, by Ms. Walker, is if the council is considering cause and it's considering cause under any of these chapters, uh, NRS chapter 281 or the Nevada rules of professional conduct or Title I, Chapter 7 of the Boulder City Code, that it, it, out of a matter of fairness, that there should be some determination by the administrative body that regulates those applicable laws, uh, to make the determination that she has indeed violated. For example, in this, uh, in our discussions, we talked about, you know, would the city council be in a position to determine whether an attorney violated the Nevada rules of professional conduct? Um, you know, we think that would be a, a fairer position. And plus, there are all these other standards that are under cause. Um, it would be a fairer position that if she was, if a, if a, um, if a complaint, a bar complaint were filed against her and the bar, uh, the state of Nevada determined that she had violated the Nevada rules of professional conduct, then it would flow naturally that, uh, the city council would say, you have been found in violation by the state bar, uh, therefore we're terminating your employment for cause. So with that, I'll stop and listen to any discussion.
Councilmember Fuldah?
I just have a question regarding that. Sometimes those administrative bodies take, um, a long time, over a year, to, um, proceed through those. So what happens to the contract in the meantime?
That is a, that is a great point. Um, and we, we discussed as well. Uh, I don't know, Ms. Walker, did you want to address that? Because that's one of the concerns that I raised, that this could take.
I would just say that the commission on ethics has a very, um, uh, has a statutory deadlines that they have to make decisions by. Um, so, uh, it, it wouldn't be that long. They have, I, I can't remember them off the top of my head, but it's, it's like 60 days they have to begin the investigation and then 90 days they have to issue like a determination on whether there was probable cause that the violation occurred. So, um, and that's not the exact language that they use, but, you know. So I think that, you know, that, that in and of itself would be a determination by the administrative body that there, there is a violation and, um, and, um, with the Nevada rules of professional conduct, I, I don't know how long the state bar takes. Um, but, you know, I just think complaints are filed a lot and they're completely baseless sometimes. And, you know, I just wouldn't, I just, uh, don't feel like it should be, like put my contract in jeopardy for a for cause termination if there's like nothing there and it's still being investigated. So that's why I, I, uh, suggested this change.
And as far as the, the, um, violation of, uh, the, the, the city charter, that would be this body, correct, Ms. Walker?
That's right. Title I's, Chapter 7 of the Boulder City Code has its own code of ethics that have conflicts of interest and things like that. So if the city council determined that there was a, an ethical violation under that code, then that would be the administrative body.
So, so you're absolutely right, this, that, that, there could be a delay in termination of employment unless the council decided to terminate without cause, which is a, a large financial decision. So you raise a, a good concern.
Anyone else? Anyone objecting then to leaving that in place? Mr. Winchester?
Uh, I, I, I don't object to, to leaving that in place.
All right.
Okay. The next section is, is our favorite topic. Uh, working, uh, working from home, the, uh, it's a, a bit of a background here. It's brought to my attention that, um, you know, prior, uh, individuals may have had some issues in not being in the office when they should have been. And we under, I understand that this body is very concerned about that. We drafted this so that, um, the principal place of work for the city attorney will be, uh, this building. Uh, Ms. Walker requested some language that says that, um, and this is, th- these are the words that I came up with time to time, um, that as, as a general rule, she will work here. Time to time, uh, it would be fine for her to work remotely, whether that's from home, whether it's from, you know, top Mount Everest, although technology probably wouldn't allow that. Um, and, uh, and so with that, Ms. Walker, if you want to make a comment.
Yes, I suggest this language, um, you know, in light of COVID, you know, I think we, we've learned that you can, you really can work from anywhere. Uh, of course, I think that the majority of the time I would be here at city hall. I, I'd be here during business hours. I'd be here during meetings. If I needed to be at city hall, I would be here. Um, but, you know, there are times sometimes when I, when I need to draft at things like that, that I found times it's helpful to work from home because I can just, um, log in and, and, and have it quiet and people don't come in and interrupt me and things like that. Um, so, uh, and obviously I, I'm, I'm a professional, you know? If, if I'm not getting the work done, you know, there's for cause, there, there's lots of things you can do to address that if I'm not, if I'm shirking my responsibilities. Um, so I just wanted like a clarifying thing to just say, like remotely, um, when necess, like when, when I, um, when it's possible and, and convenient for everybody involved, I could be, uh, appear remotely.
If I could add one more point too, um, at this sentence that we're discussing here, eh, the language subject to the foregoing. Uh, I suggested that because that means that the foregoing, which is the interest, needs, business or opportunity of the city and the city council, subject to those needs, uh, Ms. Walker could from time to time work remotely.
You know, I, I have an issue with this because of recent experience, but also just in general. Um, you know, there's a reason why there's a city attorney for the city of Boulder City. And I, I think that the reason for that is, uh, that people will know how to, uh, get, uh, in touch with them. Uh, we already have a statement in here as the interest, needs, business or opportunity of the city and the city council shall require. Um, I, I think there's opportunity there if someone needs to work remotely, uh, to allow that. Uh, I think putting this in here, uh, that, you know, just from time to time, you may do that. Um, I, I'm not willing to do that. I, I think that the needs are already put in, uh, the last sentence before the addition that as the interest, needs, business or opportunity of the city and the city council shall require. I think that provides for an opportunity, uh, to do that. Um, do I get that, yes, COVID has shown that a lot of things can be accomplished? Uh, well, they were accomplished, but not always well. So just because we can do some of these things, there are certain positions, I think, that we want those officials here at city hall. The expectation is that they will be at city hall. Uh, anyone else?
I'm fine with removing it.
Councilmember Adams?
Um, you know, I know Ms. Walker has said she's fine with removing it. Um, I have the same concerns as you, Mayor. Um, the only thing that I eventually came to is that if it is expected and potentially allowable, then I would almost rather just myself personally be comfortable with the language being in there. But again, if Ms. Walker is saying she doesn't think it should be in there and you don't think it should be in there, I'm not going to opine and think that if there's the expectation that sometimes it can happen, that even if the language isn't in there, then, then I understand. I just, I think that what COVID has, has made very, uh, at least me very aware of is that it's not just COVID related. I mean, there could be any number of reasons why, uh, you're not able to be at the office, whether it's a cold or something that doesn't make you unable to work or do the duties. Um, but you may want to protect the other employees. So, um, you know, I think, you know, it's, it's worth having in there. But again, I'm not going to be the one who's holding out if nobody else wants to, so.
Anyone else? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, it's one of those situations where I can equally see both sides, um, to the best of her ability. And there has been a situation for the last year, um, exposure to, to the virus. Uh, possibly technology breakdown in, in city hall, where it would need be that, uh, the city attorney would need to work from home to get done whatever it is that needs to get done. And since it says subject to the foregoing, then the city attorney needs to be here in the interest, needs, business and opportunity of the city and city council, that what we require. And if he's required to be here, that there might be outside times. And this does not allow for that. This, unless you say, and to the best of her ability. But still, there might be considerations with, like I, like Smith said, we've experienced in the last year that there are unintended situations that can call for that. So, um, on the other hand, I'd like to know that the city attorney is here unless there's, eh, eh, extenuating circumstances.
Right. I, I believe there's even a charter reference regarding the place of employment of the city attorney. So once again, I, I, I understand that, you know, the feeling may be, well, the, the charter's an old document. But, uh, let's not just assume that the people who wrote it didn't know what they might be talking about. Anyone else?
I'll just add this pandemic is not over.
Anyone else? All right, so the decision appears to be then that that will be removed.
Thank you.
Is that acceptable, Ms. Walker?
Yes, I, as I said before, I'm comfortable removing the language.
Thank you.
The next, uh, point to, to, uh, address is section 15, confidential information. Uh, this prohibits, uh, the city attorney from, uh, disclosing, using any confidential information, uh, disclosing, uh, criminal investigations, litigation, et cetera, et cetera. The, uh, the, 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 the requested sort of the, the, um, negotiated compromise here that we present to you is the event that, that the employee makes disclosures as required by NRS Chapter. by NRS chapter two, three, nine, or other applicable law, and is done in compliance with such laws, I'm sorry, and in compliance with said laws, such disclosures shall not shall not serve as a forecause reason for employee's termination. So to unpack that a little bit, what that means is that if the city attorney makes disclosures as required by law, and if the city, uh, council disagrees with making that a disclosure, but if the disclosure was in compliance with law, city attorney can still be terminated, but that termination won't be for cause. It will be a termination without cause and she'll receive, uh, severance. That was, um, that was the thought behind this, uh, proposed edit.
Ms. Walker, did you want to make any comment on that?
Uh, no, no further comment unless there's questions from the council.
Questions or comments? So anyone objecting to leaving it in?
Wait, I, wait, what, which one are we talking?
Oh, this is, uh, the, um, section fifteen.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Okay.
Moving forward, uh, this is still missing from the the contract, and I assume that we'll need this today, we'll need an address, section seventeen.
Um, yeah, I I just left it blank because I'm in the process of buying a house, so.
Understood. So how 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 shall we deal with that if we're if we're going to finalize this today?
I guess we can just use my current address and, um, update it.
What does everyone think about that?
Well, I I would say it's the effective date, your address is the effective date.
Sure, it's six zero nine seven Honeysuckle Ridge.
Wait, wait, sorry.
Or do I have to, this is a public meeting, like, this is a public meeting, to disclose where I live. Like, I mean, it's public record, but I'd rather not say my address on, kind of.
So how about when we're finalizing it, you just give it?
That sounds good.
Is that, is that fair?
Yeah.
Uh, section eighteen, uh, we actually think that this is an, um, an improvement over the original. Um, there are disclosures required of people in positions such as city attorney, and those are under NRS, uh, two eighty-one A, and the negotiated agreement is that, uh, Ms. Walker will make any such disclosures that are required, uh, by statute. Um, did you want to make any comments on that?
Uh, no comments unless there's questions from councilmembers.
I do have a concern with this, uh, because there is language, uh, in the charter, uh, regarding conflicts of interest, uh, I'm not sure how those compare to what's in two eighty-one, uh, but I would want to ensure that compliance be with both two eighty-one and with the city charter.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable adding city charter or just applicable law. I mean, I'm required to comply with the charter and NRS two eighty-one A regardless of whether it's in this contract, but, um, whatever, if that's, if that's, uh, I'm totally comfortable adding.
I I personally, I prefer spelling it out.
I as well, especially on an item like this.
Sure.
Okay. So adding the la- the words "and" to the city charter?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Uh, the next item is is actually very small, it's section nineteen. Uh, this is just making it clear that, uh, Ms. Walker's, uh, and and you, Ms. Walker inserted the phrase "comp time," so I'll let her address that, but her sick leave, uh, annual leave that's already been accrued in her current position, that that will roll over, and again, as I said at the outset, this has always been something that has been anticipated by this contract, is that she will continue to, she will roll over the benefits, I apologize, I said benefits, the sick leave, um, and annual leave, and I, and Ms. Walker, I'll let you address comp time.
Yeah, comp time is just, we're, we're, a lot of that is the city, too, so I just didn't want to lose that either. I mean, I have a certain amount of comp time as well.
Okay, I I'm not sure how that's calculated, and also, again, we get back to a charter provision on this. Uh, the charter talks about irregular hours and and that sort of information, so I, again, I I need to be clear what it is you mean, that there's some city provision.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm happy to clarify. Comp time is what, um, and Bryce might be able to do a better, uh, um, summary, but we essentially, when a, when a, a holiday, I think, falls on, uh, on a city workday, we get a certain amount of, we get that time that we can use, then we can later use that for, it's just the same as sick leave or annual leave, it's just an additional category. So I've already accrued it as acting city attorney, and it's mine, so this just clarifies that that continues.
Well, again, I, something I think we need to be clear on, whatever city policies are, those aren't automatically written into your contract. That's the reason we're going over things like, uh, accumulation of sick leave and vacation leave. So I I want to be very careful about saying that, uh, your contract is subject to all other, uh, methods or procedures that the city may employ. This is a separate contract. This is not saying that whatever it is that other employees may have as benefits automatically are assigned to you as well.
That that's not what this is saying at all, Mayor. This is just, it's just forty hours comp time that I've earned.
Well, perhaps Mr. Bolt can explain how exactly this works.
This would be probably better represented if it was called holiday leave. Uh, it is leave, uh, that, that, because comp time is associated with people that are not exempt, I'm sorry, that are not exempt. We are exempt from the Fair Labor Standards Act, and so it's not, comp time is usually associated with the Fair Labor Standards Act. Instead, this is a benefit that, uh, if we work on a, uh, or if a holiday is, uh, during a non-work day, we would receive that as holiday leave to be used at another time.
Thank you. I I would prefer then that that be changed to holiday leave time, uh, because I think the general understanding of comp time is that a person may work in excess of forty hours in a week, and they would then have those hours available to them as leave at a another time. So I, I, the phrase itself, I think, i- is inaccurate.
My apologies, Mayor, that wasn't my intent to, um, I I'm comfortable using holiday leave.
All right. Any any other questions or comments?
I'm sorry, holiday?
Holiday leave.
Holiday leave.
Councilmember Folden?
Yeah, I would just agree with the holiday leave. I I think that it gets confusing when, in the contract, it doesn't discuss comp time and how that would work, and so it gets kind of confusing, but holiday would be, you know, just those holiday days where holidays fall on a workday, if that makes sense.
Anyone else? Anyone disagree with changing that to holiday leave time? All right.
Okay. The the next, uh, topic of discussion is under section, uh, well, section eight, uh, sorry, section nineteen, I apologize, section nineteen point four. A little bit of background on this, the, this contract was originally, um, drafted so that, uh, any disputes arising from, uh, Ms. Walker's employment, so not just in regard to this this contract, but any dispute arising from her employment would be submitted to binding arbitration. This is a common provision in in many employment agreements. Uh, it does keep the dispute out of the courts. Uh, if a legal dispute is filed in the courts, um, then, um, the, uh, the the employer immediately moves to have the the case, uh, referred to to arbitration. Ms. Walker proposed to, uh, include a provision that would require the city to mediate before arbitration, uh, in good faith, uh, to go through the mediation, uh, process, uh, and then if mediation was unsuccessful, then to, can you continue on to arbitration? Um, I wanted to make sure that it's clear that this would not in any way slow down or, uh, interfere with the ability to terminate, uh, the employment of the city attorney. So what would happen would be the city attorney would be terminated and and most likely would be terminated with cause, uh, and then the city attorney would invoke the mediation slash arbitration provision, uh, and the parties would then go through that, um, that, uh, process to try to resolve, um, any issues between them. It would also include, um, frankly, statutory claims, uh, like, uh, harassment, discrimination, those sorts of claims would also go through, uh, this, uh, this process. Uh, one big factor here, and this is often, um, often debated, uh, would be the the requirement that the aggrieved party, uh, has to within thirty days, uh, demand arbitration in writing, uh, in order for the process to even even move forward. Otherwise, those claims would be, would be abandoned. Um, uh, the, the big ticket item here, of course, is adding a mediation, um, requirement to it, um, because it is, it is extra time, and and even though the costs of the mediator or the mediator's fees would be split between the city and, uh, Ms. Walker, obviously, there would be attorney's fees and other costs associated with mediation. Then moving to, uh, arbitration, um, under the, under standard arbitration procedures, um, the employer is on the hook for the arbitrator fees. Uh, so that's, that's a, a, an overview of of this, this fairly substantial proposed change, which is the mediation. I've included the mediation clause here so that you could see what it looks like. Uh, I'm not necessarily recommending it. I mean, a- a- as your attorney, um, it's your decision as, from my personal viewpoint. I am a fan of mediation, but obviously there are costs associated with it. So I included this here so that you could look at what it might look like if you were to accept the proposal to mediate before going to arbitration.
Um, I defer to the council on discussion of mediation. The only, I made the change that I would, uh, delete this, that I have a, that I have to bring, um, I have to request the mediation within thirty days of, after the occurrence. This essentially weighs my rights to statute of limitations on all claims, uh, so I will not agree to this. I I think that I have a, a right to my statute of limitations, and if I ever brought a claim, it would go through mediation and arbitration, it would be a very, or just arbitration, depending on what the council feels, uh, and, um, be very, uh, out of the public eye, you know, if I'm, if I'm su- subjected to sexual harassment or things like that, and, or just that things, uh, that that, uh, you know, are, um, incidents that occur, and I don't, you know, maybe I don't make a claim right away, and I, and then it gets worse, you know, and then did I waive it? And I, in thirty days, that's crazy. I mean, I I think that the applicable statute of limitations to my cause of action should apply.
And if I could add to that, there there is a good case law that says that, um, things that have to go before agencies, um, for example, harassment, discrimination type claims, that the agency still has jurisdiction over their, over those claims, even if there is an arbitration, a decision in place. So so those claims could be brought, um, jurisdictionally and procedurally to an agency, even if arbitration wasn't selected within thirty days. So just, just want to make that clear, and and please, please respond if, if if I'm mistaken about that.
Uh, it's not here in the contract, and I'm not an employment attorney, and I just, I I don't think it's much to ask, to ask that this be deleted.
The thirty day?
Yeah.
Understood.
And because anything I would bring, again, would have to be within the applicable statute of limitations, and I would go through mediation and arbitration, it wouldn't go to a court.
Well, I, and I understand your position on that, um, but there has to be some time limit, and Mr. Wilkinson has pointed out that you do not waive statutory, uh, rights to pursue things like discrimination claims or...
I asked my attorney, and he said absolutely, they argued you waived your right to statute of limitations, so I disagree respectfully.
Well, I, you know, I I think that the reason something like this is in here, um, is to bring about some finality, and it has to do, again, primarily with severance. Um, so if, uh, the employment were to be terminated, um, and the employees say, or the city attorneys say, "I do not, uh, agree with this, and I intend to pursue litigation," um, I think that avenue is open. The the requirement here is whether you get severance. So I think that what happens is you can make a decision, or a decision can be made. Um, I will not accept severance, and I will pursue other legal remedies. Mr. Wilkinson, am I going in the wrong direction on this?
No, I I think, I I think you are on on the right path, your, your...
What?
Sorry.
No, this applies to any dispute about this agreement. Does, if I, if I have severance, I sign a waiver and release of all claims, so I already can't bring suit. To get my severance, I have to sign a waiver and release.
Right.
So this is if I'm terminated for cause, or this is just if I feel like I am ever the subject of a claim, I I, it gives me thirty days to bring it. So it's not just to do with severance.
Mr. Wilkinson?
Yeah, that's, um, she she makes a great point. I mean, uh, as I mentioned earlier, the the, um, the agencies will hear, uh, such claims, but you're right, in a court of law, uh, if she were to try to bring, uh, a claim of discrimination or harassment, uh, the city would be within its rights to say, "We had an arbitration agreement, she had thirty days to, uh, request arbitration, she did not, so she has waived." It would, it would act as a waiver of legal claims. Yes, I'm sorry, I I don't have that right to...
So the extension of, uh, you know, a longer period of time? Uh, a- again, my, my concern here is, and the reason why arbitration clauses are used, is it gives some certainty about the future. Um, and so, eh, Ms. Walker is stating that this provision applies whether termination has occurred or not. Is that true?
That is correct, yes.
I would also like to say that there are statutes of limitation. Those are timeframes in which I'm required to bring claims. And any claim would be subject to mediation and arbitration, it wouldn't go to a court.
Well, there are a couple of questions here to be answered. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I support removing that because there are, I I, I believe that if there's termination for claw, for cause, um, that's a different situation than a sexual harassment claim that comes later than thirty days after, um, this says that if there is a serious issue, uh, that comes up in the work environment, um, no matter whose, whose job it is. It says that if she does not, um, attempt to agree on a mediator within the thirty days, um, that, that limits the amount of time she has to deal with the situation. Now, these are hopefully outside issues, hopefully things that will never have to be addressed, but there are situations, um, the, I I think that if it's, if the sticking point is the thirty days of the request to mediate, we still, there's still a mediation. This is not, this is about mediation and arbitration. It doesn't say, um, that after thirty days, uh, this is dropped. It's just, it it's an opportunity to extend the amount of time, uh, to request mediation for her. And and I, I think that there are circumstances, and this is outside of forecause termination, that this is just circumstances that happen in the workplace, and they do happen...
No, no, I, again, I I hate to interrupt, but I think you're incorrect about situations in the workplace. Uh, what this is referring to is a dispute or difference of opinion between employee and city involving the meaning interpretation application or any provision of this agreement, or any other dispute between the parties arising out of the employment relationship.
Right, right, so it would be very broad. It would be, uh, more than just the termination under this agreement. It would be... It would be, you know, a claim that she was, you know, discriminated against based on her religion or other, other types of claims would all be subsumed within the arbitration provision.
Okay.
Yeah.
So when, when is the, the 30 day clock start ticking then?
It starts ticking upon the occurrence of the, the event giving rise to the dispute is the current, is the original language.
Okay. All right. Again, I apologize, Councilmember Bridges, that I had, you know, there's a lot of stuff here that struck out and. Councilmember Adams?
I mean, I will just add that, you know, especially with things such as discrimination, you may not know that within that 30 days of when you were discriminated against and when that clock starts ticking, you know, knowing people who have been victims of harassment and other issues. It, it is hard. The 30 day limit is, there is so much to, to decide and to determine about what is best for the individual. I think it's, it's frankly, I think it's inappropriate. There are reasons that there are statute of limitations and I think that those are reasonable for the city to follow. But especially when, if we're talking about from the day the incident takes place, it's, it can just be, you can have surpassed that before you even realize it's happened.
Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes. What other objections do you have on this other than the days? Or is it really about the days?
It's about, yeah, the whole, the whole clause because the thing is, I, it should just be the applicable statute of limitations that applies to my claim. And again, if I bring a claim, it goes to mediation and arbitration. So it's not going to court. It's a set process. Costs are limited. Like I, I don't want to, I don't know what's going to happen to me. And so I don't know, I don't want to waive all my like rights for my claim within a set amount of days. Cause when does that, you know, I mean, I, I don't, you could put 90 days, one in 20 days. Like why shouldn't it just be the applicable statute of limitations for whatever my claim is? I mean, it just goes to mediation and arbitration and it's settled. Like we split the cost of mediation, which my suggestion, because I felt like that was fair. If I felt like I wronged, I could bring a claim and I'm required to split that cost to resolve it. And then if I can't, if we can't resolve it, then it goes to arbitration and, and then there's a result. And, and it's out of the public eye. It's, it's, it's a set process. It's, it's, I mean, I should have a remedy if I am wronged.
And to Ms. Walker's point, I want to underline or score her point earlier, which is a very good point. Which is if, if she's, I think one of the things counsel might be concerned about is, you know, if her employment terminates and, you know, a year later, all of a sudden there's this demand for, you know, mediation, arbitration. Well, if she is terminated without cause, she will have waived all of her claims anyway. So I think it's important to keep that in mind, that this really would only arise upon a voluntary termination or upon a termination for cause where she did not receive severance. And, and again, if, if she does raise concerns after a voluntary termination, there can always be a negotiation and a settlement and a waiver of claims. So I understand, and this was written, obviously we wrote this, and this is a very typical provision in arbitration agreements, but we completely understand that this is your decision as to this employee into this contract as to, you know, how much time, if any, you want to restrict her ability to, to bring a claim and, and if she doesn't, to waive such claims.
What, what's the downside of accepting the language that Ms. Walker has proposed?
Well, it would be basically pulling out the, any kind of time limit. So, so and we, what we could maybe discuss is to say that, you know, all applicable statutes of limitations shall continue to, to apply and that the arbitrator would have the authority to determine issues of statutes of limitations. That's often seen in arbitration agreements where the, if a claim is brought, just like the judge in a, in a civil trial would have the authority to determine whether the statute of limitations had run, the arbitrator could be given that authority.
What if you just put, no request to mediate will be entertained or processed unless it's received in writing by the other parties to this agreement within the applicable statute of limitations? And that the arbitrator has the right to determine the applicable statute of limitations?
I have no problem allowing for the statute of limitations. I, I do have a problem with open-endedness to these things. But the statutes are there for a reason, for that reason. Anyone else? Councilmember Folda?
I just had a question. So mediation and arbitration doesn't have on its own, its own statute of when those can be brought. It depends on what is, what's the complaint? And those separate statutes controls those, correct?
Right, right, right. Yeah. I mean, I mean theoretically you could request to mediate or arbitrate something, you know, 20 years after the fact. But a provision like the one we're discussing would prohibit, well, that's a good question. So you could request the mediation arbitration and then the arbitrator would immediately determine that the statute of limitations had run and dismissed the case. But you're absolutely right. There is, and, and that's, I think the thinking behind this kind of a, of a a provision that says that, you know, you've got 30 days or whatever, 60 days or 100 or, you know, 200, whatever amount of time to request arbitration or else forever hold your peace for that, that very reason. So.
But at least there would be each, each thing that could be brought forth would have its own separate statute of limitation that it wouldn't be just unlimited forever.
That's right. Every, every claim.
Each claim has its own separate end date. Okay.
Every legal claim has a statute of limitation.
Well, I guess a question does arise if it's not a statutory claim, if it's a tort claim.
Which also has statutes of limitations as well under NRS. And then one, I think my, my opinion here is if we are leaning towards adopting the statute of limitations, to me, that also directs us towards arbitration versus mediation, because mediators are not in the business of determining statutes of limitations. Mediators are in the business of determining whether there's common ground for the parties to agree, et cetera, et cetera. So if I could propose a compromise that we drop the 30 days, go with the statute of limitations, but also not incorporate mediation into this agreement, that, that would be, I think, a, a reasonable outcome in my opinion.
And I, I think there's some validity to that too. If all, if what we're talking about is either statutory or tort law, you know, mediators often work on disputes.
Correct.
And this seems to be talking about just law whether it be tort law or statutory law. Councilmember Bridges?
I'm, I'm really uncomfortable with getting, getting rid of the mediation. I mean, this seems to be the part of this that's the meat. Is adding mediation to, as a part of the process, as the initial part of the process, if I'm not mistaken. If I'm wrong, please correct me, but that the idea is to, between the parties' relationships shall be submitted to mediation and if it cannot be resolved by way of mediation, it shall be adjudicated exclusively through binding arbitration. That there is an A and if not A, then B. And would then the condition upon the statute of limitations of whatever it is, then would be part of the arbitration process.
That's, that's correct. It would go through mediation first.
Yeah. And if mediation is unsuccessful, then you go to arbitration. So
Right.
It seems like a lot of this was written in order to incorporate the mediation process first.
Well, what, what is it that you see advantageous about the mediation process? What, what do you think is beneficial in a contract to have that?
That, that the two parties are brought together for the purpose of coming up with a solution as opposed to just having a third party coming in and arbitrating the decision. There's a mediation process that goes on, you know, to have a mediator, to have. I mean, it just seems, it's a different process. The mediation is, we're going to go and we're going to sit down and we're going to hash this out. Arbitration is now, this person's going to listen to both sides and make a decision.
Right. And I think to your point, and again, I mentioned earlier personally, I am a fan of mediation. I'm actually, I'm, I'm a licensed mediator. But setting that aside, I think if it were to happen that a request for mediation were to come up, you know, five years later, I'm, you know, 10 years later, that the employer going in would say, well, wait a minute, why are we even here? The statute of limitations ran a long time ago. And so, and, and that's, I think where I'm struggling is how do you incorporate that notion into a mediation agreement? Whereas with an arbitration agreement, it's, it's simple, right? Person requests arbitration, you pick an arbitrator, you tell the, you know, you write, you know, you, you, you bring it to the arbitrator's attention that the statute of limitations has run and the arbitrator, like a judge, has the authority to dismiss the case. There are still costs associated with that because you've got to have lawyers, you've got to, you know, get through certain procedures like picking the arbitrator, but it's a, it's a pretty easy solution to let the arbitrator know, hey, dismiss this case. With mediation, like you said, it's squishy. And so it's, you, you would come to it saying, the statute of limitations ran a long time ago, yet here we are. And that would affect your mediation stance.
But it would, but that would be in, under condition one, that it, the matter cannot be resolved by way of mediation.
Right, right. Exactly.
So if the matter can be resolved by mediation.
And it could be.
Okay. So you, well, you have something going on in the workplace and there's a, there is, it's brought up and determined that it's going to go to mediation. That it can't.
It can't.
But if, but if five years later, 10 years later, the statute of limitations on whatever it was that occurred that day, it cannot be resolved by way of mediation. So then B, it shall be adjudicated exclusively through binding arbitration.
That's a fair, that's a fair point. Yeah. And, and we're actually, and we're all, and we do this all the time, you know, we attorneys, we have to imagine sort of the worst case scenario. Right? And, and that would be, you know, the worst case scenario would be long after the, the statute has run, an employee, an unhappy employee comes back and says, no, I want to mediate. But that's, that's, that's the conundrum I think we're facing here. How do we, how do we, how do we make sure that that doesn't happen? And one way you can do that is you could adopt the statute of limitations and, and make it clear that no, no claims shall be brought. And perhaps, and again, this is because we're kind of being a little creative here, you could even, well, and we haven't dealt with the, the prevailing party fees yet. So that could be another stop.
Take mediation out than be creative.
I understand.
I mean, the point I added a mediation for was, was really to help everybody. I mean, when I was at Boyd, we have the Saltman Dispute Resolution Center. Boyd's a very, they really look at alternative dispute resolution. I mediated cases in family court and at the Neighborhood Justice Center. And it's really great because a lot of aggrieved people just feel the need to be heard. And, and so what's, what's beneficial about it is it gives a forum for that. And it's really just like a day where you go and meet and the mediator meets with both parties and attempts to like find a resolution. You know, and sometimes it's resolvable, sometimes it's not. I guess sure, in theory, under the agreement, you could bring a claim and it could be mediated. But it couldn't be arbitrated because the statute of limitations would apply. And the likelihood of somebody wanting to mediate after the statute of limitations has run seems really unlikely. It's really just to save everybody. It, it's really, I put it in there to be helpful. I, I mean, to both parties. I mean, of course myself, because I am a personal, you know, interest. I, I, I am for alternative dispute resolution. I am not a litigious person. I can't imagine a scenario where I would sue unless it was egregious. And so, so that's why I added it. But if there's hesitation, we can take it out. I mean, I'm fine just having arbitration. Again, I, I just thought, you know, my attorney threw it in there. I thought that looks, you know, that sounds good. So I'm fine taking it out.
Well, again, my, my concern is that as this process has moved forward, you know, there was considerable concern expressed by the city's special counsel.
Sure. Let's take it out. That's fine.
Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
I think, I think mediation is a good thing. It's an opportunity to, to resolve before arbitration. It's a shared cost with the aggrieved party and the, and the, I just don't see how it, how it hurts. I mean, except for the fact that yes, and then we have to go to arbitration if we can't do that and it costs us a little bit more money. But at the end of the day, I mean, if you can mediate, why wouldn't, why would you not want to at least attempt that?
Well, there's no prevention of mediation prior to going to mediations. That, that's one aspect of this, but. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I still go back to submitted to mediation and if the matter cannot be resolved by way of mediation and there are circumstances including statutes of limitations. I mean, that's really, we're talking about the outliers. We're more, this is really a discussion of what, what, something happened. There's something to discuss and then take, instead of taking it right to arbitration, there's a mediation process. 20 years from now, 10 years from now is not a situation that's going to go to mediation. So it's really adjudication exclusively through binding arbitration. That it does, it, it gives an option to do something before that.
Councilmember Hoskins?
Maybe we should have the mediation for 10 or 15 minutes between the two of you so you could decide whether we leave it in or take it out.
I just think it should be taken out. I, I don't, I, I, like I said, I wasn't trying to, I think it's fine to take it out. It was never a sticking point for me.
So I guess then that, if, if that is acceptable to the council, then the, the, still the question remains of this 30 days to request arbitration and what you would prefer to do with that in light of Ms. Walker's points about, you know, 30 days being very short and, and the things that she already said. So I would like to hear what you think about, about that aspect.
Again, I'm, I'm fine with making the statutory limits, applicable statutory limits.
With that additional language that the arbitrator could determine that?
Right. I think it's important. All right. I will, I will make those changes. And I believe, Ms. Walker, that, I think that's, that's everything that we had. I mean, one last change that just says, this was a very good addition, we thought. Accords with NRS, and this is at the bottom of page seven, I think. In accordance with NRS 597.995, each signature below indicates that the respective party specifically authorizes the arbitration provision set forth in this agreement and acknowledges its affirmation, affirmative agreement to the provision. That's just, that's standard, that's, you know, standard language. I believe, Ms. Walker, you, you added that, I think.
Yeah, my, my attorney did.
Right. Yes. And that's, that's, we think that's an excellent addition. So. So I guess my, that's all I have. So I will turn it over to everyone else to give me my directions.
Ms. Walker, do you have anything to add or?
Uh, no.
Actually, there is one more thing and this is not, it's not particularly substantive. Ms. Walker made a good point. As far as arbitration goes, there's an organization called JAMS. What is JAMS? The judicial arbitration, I can't even find it here. But anyway, there's a, other than AAA, which is the American Arbitration Association, JAMS is an alternative to that. They also provide arbitrators. They also have rules of procedure that are, you know, very, very, very good. And they, they have a strong local presence. So, and they're cheaper. So to Ms. Walker's point, we would like to substitute JAMS in place of AAA. Again, it's not a substantive change. It still gives the city all of the rights and protections that they would have under AAA. And I just wanted to make sure that you understood why we're moving from AAA to JAMS. So.
The only question I would have is how stable are these types of organizations?
JAMS has been around a long time. JAMS has been around a long time, and yeah.
Again, if we were to get, you know, eight years, 12 years down the road, identifying a specific organization, but if they've been around for a while.
I don't think any statute of limitations is that long, but yeah.
They're, they're very stable and they've been around a long, a long time.
Well, you never know how long some people may take to file a claim.
This is true. All right, was there anything else?
I would just say that with the changes that council approved today, I'd be prepared to agree to the contract and be appointed today if that's the pleasure of the council.
Any other questions or comments from council? Councilmember Bridges?
This has been a very interesting experience. I've never sat through an, an employment negotiation and contract negotiation like this. It's, I, I just, it's been a, I, hopefully, it's, it's for the benefit of the city and the city attorney, yes. I believe it is.
Councilmember Adams?
I'll just add that I appreciate the professionalism of both Ms. Walker and Mr. Winchester here for, just in discussing with you, discussing with Ms. Walker, both on an, on an individual level and then together when we were kind of discussing, kind of, there was kind of a point-counterpoint, I just, it really gave me a lot of, just a lot of confidence in the, in the process and that I think you guys worked, I, I think it's, it's really good, I'm glad we are here where we are.
Thank you.
Anyone else? You know, a- as far as the process goes, you know, having been here for the prior hiring of the city attorney, while this process has been longer and certainly can be more stressful, I think that it has been to the benefit of the public, I think it's been to the benefit of the participants, meaning the city council and Ms. Walker. This has been done in such a way where independent counsel has reviewed what we've been doing, has made recommendations to us on sound law and, and contract language. So with that, I will offer a motion to approve Resolution 7279 with the amendments to the contract that have been agreed to today and that Mr. Wilkinson has documented.
I second.
Anyone opposed? Or, excuse me, and all in favor?
I.
I, I assume we're gonna have one answer, but anyone opposed? All right, the vote is unanimous then. Ms. Walker, congratulations, you know, you've been doing a lot of work for us over the past several months, this now makes it official. Okay? And with that, we...
Sarah, we can hang up now.
And Mr. Wilkinson, again, appreciation to you and your firm, Mr. Rashardi, for all the expertise.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we will move then to our last public comment period. Anyone wishing to make public comment may call 702-589-9629. Ms. Walker?
I'd like to make public comment.
Please go ahead.
I just wanna say that since I assumed this role on October 21st, I went straight to work that day when you appointed me counsel. I am so grateful for this opportunity to serve as your city attorney. I have given everything that I have to the city. I've worked almost every weekend since I started, most Fridays for sure, definitely, because there is a lot of work to be done and a lot to get up to speed, but I've relished it, it's been wonderful, it's, I love the city, I love the staff, I love working here, and I would continue to dedicate myself to this city. I do not believe the city charter is an old document to be discarded, I believe it is the governing constitutional foundation of this city, and I will, in my oath of office, adhere to my oath of office and always uphold the charter. It's important to understand as a lawyer that things change and court decisions and laws are passed and there is an order of, of authority, the state law can preempt things and federal law can preempt things. And so it's my job as an attorney to also uphold that law. And it's in the city charter, if something were to apply to me, I don't think it's appropriate at all for me to interpret it. I think it would be a conflict of interest under NRS 281A, and I think the, so I'm just wanted to, I, in no way did I mean to, and offer interpretation of the charter today. I, I called Mr. Booker and I offered to pay him to replace me and he, he wouldn't take my money. I told him, I said, "The city charter says this is something I have to do at my expense," and he said, "No, no, no, I won't take your money," and I, so I gave him a gift card recently. So I just wanted to make that clear, and, and every council meeting that I've missed has, has been just for this process. It hasn't been 'cause I've taken a vacation, it hasn't been since I was sick or, or took anything like that. So I just want to say that and I wanna just, again, thank this, the mayor and council for this opportunity. I am so excited to serve this city and continuing in this role, and thank you.
Thank you, and we do appreciate all your efforts. Again, anyone wishing to call for public comment, the phone number 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails or voicemails received?
No written comments or emails.
Thank you. All right, hearing none, no others for public comment, we will close the public comment period and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.